Maybe he's texting me.
So we're waiting, Jared's still probably going to join us and we're not having any of the alternates sit in tonight?
They may be on and we can pull, pull them in if we need to. Jared, I haven't heard that he's unavailable. So I don't know if he's just maybe trying to join still.
All right. Well, if we don't have Jared on in just a few minutes, let's, and if one of the alternates is on, let's have that alternate join us.
Do you want to check YouTube on your computer? Let me see it working. You know how to find that. I'll maybe check my phone here. All right. So yeah, we're just checking here, Mr. Chair, we're broadcasting and we're currently recording. But before we start into the business of the meeting, we're just making sure that it's available for viewers to see on YouTube. It's been giving us a little bit of grief, so I will let you know very soon here if that is working.
All right. And then anytime you're ready to go on air or broadcast, I'm good. Are we on yet or? Lyle, are you talking? I cannot hear you. Show, my icon is showing that you're muted.
Okay.
In fact, mine says everybody's muted.
Yeah, so I'm discussing with our IT staff. So we are, we're currently live and broadcasting through Zoom. So any of the public who's trying to participate in the meeting through that, it should be working.
All right.
YouTube, for some reason, if anybody was just interested in watching, the connection's not working. I think we'd probably okay to go where there is an option for the public. Whether they raise their hand ever or not to watch it in the Zoom meeting, we don't have a limit really on the number of participants that can join.
Right.
So if anyone that's on Zoom right now watching this is working, neighbors or anything trying to use YouTube, have them come to the Zoom link. And you'll be able to watch and participate as well that way. So we're still trying to get YouTube to work.
Oh, all right. Should we wait for YouTube or should we begin?
I don't know if it's going to be 30 seconds or 30 minutes. Our IT has been working on it for about 15 minutes already. So we may just be safer to begin, or we may be here all night trying to get that to work. So I'm going to share my screen here to pull up the details of the meeting. And then I think we're okay to start.
Okay. Well, we'll begin. Welcome, everybody. We appreciate your joining us for tonight's planning commission meeting. We have a couple of several public hearings this evening for some items of business and some other things. Let me just ask, I mean, we're, we're short one planning commissioner. We have a quorum at this point. But we have one of our regular members who is not with us, Jared, unless you're out there. And we're not seeing you, but if not, and I also don't know, one of our alternate planning commission members is with us. If so, we would have that alternate join us.
Yeah, I do see Mr. Chair that we've got Abigail Hunt that's on here as an alternate. We could offer her to participate. We could simply give her that permission if you wish her to join.
Yeah, she's, if she's there and if she's willing, we still don't see Jared, correct?
Correct. I still don't see him in the attendees section. So I'll go ahead and allow Abigail to.
Why don't we add Abigail and have her join us as one, the one alternate who's with us? If Jared does happen to join in later, we can always then make the change that we need to.
Okay, I'm giving you the, promoting you to a panelist. I guess if you're not interested, you can always deny that, but hopefully you'll accept and welcome to join the commission. I know you're prepared for the discussion this evening since appreciate you being available. Okay, so she is now with us, Mr. Chair.
All right. Abigail, you there?
Yep.
Okay, good. Abigail, I need to apologize. I haven't responded to your email from earlier and I'll do that shortly, but probably not until after the commission meeting now.
No problem.
Okay. Well, let's begin. Our first agenda item is approval of the minutes from our meeting of May 14th, 2020. Have the commission members had a chance to look over those minutes and are there any comments on those minutes? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve minutes from the meeting on April 20th, or May 14th, 2020.
That is Steve that made that motion?
Correct.
Is there a second to that? Kwan seconds that. Any other comments or corrections to the minutes before we vote on them? Let's just do that as a group vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, those minutes will stand approved. Thank you. All right, our first business item tonight is a public hearing for a rezon, a proposed rezon of 1.47 acres. Located at 1413 Web Lane from the R120 single family residential zone to the R114 single family residential zone. To include a PRUD overlay. The applicants are Mike and Keisha Harden. And we'll begin with our presentation from staff on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll start with this. I know the planning commission has seen several comments on this. And we'll speak to that maybe a little bit as I go along with the presentation, but I did just want to first acknowledge from staff and we had informed you about this via email previously. As is normal for a rezon applicant that worked with staff with their proposal and found a zone that would accommodate their request. And we sent out after they made application notice to the neighborhood and that initial notice had a typo that initially said it was an R16 PRUD. We essentially immediately after sent out another notice in the mail to those who received that to make that correction. So that may be a point of some confusion, frankly, that, you know, the onus is on us here, staff, and we apologize for that, but just to be clear, this is an R114 request. That was the applicant's consideration rather than the R16 and I'll speak to that and the PRUD and what that would accommodate. So the property here, it exists actually as a flag lot currently. There's one home, as the chair stated, on 1.47 acres, so just shy of an acre and a half. And Mr. Harden can speak a little bit more to his desires for use on the property, but having a large lot, he had some interest in doing an additional lot on the far south end of it. You can see the surrounding zoning in the area. It's an R120 currently, which is 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. It's roughly half an acre. That's all the brown here on the zoning map. You have a lot of RA, which are true half acre lots. And agricultural properties in the area. The R1LD is a two unit per acre type zoning. And in this case, they went with the request for the R114. It's difficult to see on this, but the, you can actually make out these white dots. Demonstrates the lot that the applicants proposing to do, and this is on the south end of their property. And it might let me draw on it here in a little bit. I'll try to maybe highlight that. Forgive me as I'm free handing it. So interested in creating a lot here on the far south end near the creek for one additional single family home. The difference between the R114 and R120, they're highly similar. They come from the same section of the ordinance, so they have the same permitted uses, the same conditional uses that are possible. Really, it comes down to the lot size allowance and that's a density item. And R120 is 20,000 square foot minimum is stated before when looking at the zoning map. This would allow for lots as small as 14,000 square feet. That's roughly a third of an acre in size. And so it allows for the ability to do a smaller lot, but the PRUD request itself in this case is in order to do a flag lot type development. And so bear with me as I see if I can juggle back and forth. Well, you're going to have a red mark for a minute until I figure that out. But anything that's not a standard lot facing a public street. Standard lot being meets the minimum lot width. In this case, it'd be 90 feet, the same as an R120. And having those minimum lot size. So anytime you're on a private lane, you know, tucked back, and this is the case on this one in a flag lot. Another type is a common open space type development. The PRUD ordinance is necessary to allow for what we would consider non-standard lots. And so in this case, the development would essentially create what we call a double flag lot. Allowing for access on a shared driveway to that back portion of the property for potential development. In the case of this particular request, it is a legislative action, meaning it's, we're looking for a recommendation this evening from the planning commission. You're welcome to make a recommendation this evening, or if additional details are necessary, before you're comfortable doing that, you can ask that of the applicant before moving forward. And of course, your recommendation based on how appropriate the filling is for this specific proposal at this location, how it meets with the city's general plan. And then ultimately, the city council would have the final say on whether to approve or deny the request at a future date. With that, I believe the applicant is here this evening to speak more to what they hope to do with the property. I'm happy to take any questions of the commission as well. And I'll complete my presentation with that. Again, just reminding the commission, with it being a public hearing as stated. We've received several comments already and we're happy to help both through those who are, or work with those who are online participating to give them a chance to speak when you're ready to accept their comments.
Okay. Thank you, Lyle. Let's have, let's see if there are any questions or comments from the staff. Or I'm sorry, the commission of staff with regard to this proposal.
Well, I just, I'm sorry, I had a question about the size of lot. I didn't see, I didn't see a dimensions or a square foot, so I'm guessing it's probably close to 14,000 square feet. And is the flag, is any portion of the flag included in the square footage calculation of like of the flag pole, the access? Included in the calculation of the lot size, or is it just the lot size and then like an access off of the flag lot portion?
Yeah, great question. So in this case, the way he's drawn and calculated it, he's estimating about 0.4 acres. So yeah, you won't see dimensions on the specific line work here on the map. So I'm going off of what this says up here in the corner. And in this case, I believe that is around just that back portion of the lot. I don't think it includes any of the stem. Ultimately, what we would need prior to approval or flag lot requires that ownership actually be brought out to the street. And so we would have I call the double flag stem where this north end of the, the property, the flag pole, so to speak, would be kind of divided in half. 18 feet of it would be owned by the existing house and the other 18 feet would go all the way back to the, our lot. So that's square footage that would potentially be added to that back lot. We just don't have this exact dimensions on it at this point. I let the applicant speak to this maybe further, but I think they're looking for a direction on, you know, if this route would be appropriate, they could put together additional details. You could require that of them before making a decision, just to ensure that that's the case. If they were 19,999 square feet, they would be shy of the ability to do the R120 flag lot. So I think they're kind of thinking, depending on how that shakes out, the R114 just allows a little bit of wiggle room to perhaps make something fit if a home on that part of the lots. So.
Yeah, okay. So that, this is just kind of a clarification of a, like a comment I had is that that 0.4 acre into 43, 560 square feet for an acre leaves them with a 17,424 square foot lot without the 18 foot wide flag pole that would connect to the street. So under the R114 rezon request, there's no way that they could take this 1.4 acre and then subdivide it into 2.2s. Because that would make it less than, or is it in the aggregate? Meaning that like the size of the existing home would still be one acre, 1.1, and then I'm just thinking about all of the different configurations that this could be if the rezon were to go forward.
You know, I'm not positive I catch the question. I think your calculations are correct. So where that division is drawn north to south, as long as one lot maintains, well, essentially as long as any lot within the subdivision has at least 14,000 square feet. They could configure it in a different manner. So for example, the city's ordinance on a flag lot type development really only goes to a double flag lot type concept. So they couldn't add a third lot under a triple flag lot or a fourth lot. So even though there might be enough acreage. Perhaps that's the question to.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the question is whether you can divide, if you can average the lot sizes. Because there, there wasn't enough in the back that you can do two 14,000 square foot lots. But there's enough in the aggregate that you could get three or four lots here if you average the lot sizes. And if, if that's not the case, then that makes me feel more comfortable about the request as it is. And what might, what might happen in the future.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. And yes, you're accurate in that, under a common open space type subdivision, it could be done in aggregate. You get so many units per acre under the flag lot type process. It's, it's different. Each lot's going to have to meet certain minimums. And, and again, if it's the commission's desire to clarify that. You, we can get that out of the applicant if needed. Have them with either an agreement of some form verify that, but essentially the ordinance limits it in that manner anyway, based on the type of development.
So kind of a follow-up question to that?
Yeah.
And maybe this is, maybe this is getting to the same answer in a different way than what, what Scott was asking. So if we do some math, which we don't like to do on the fly, but I think this is easy math. Right? So like Scott said, an acre is 43,560 square feet. So if this is 1.47 acres times 43,560. That's basically just, just over 64,000 square feet. So under the current zoning with each lot being a minimum of 20,000 square feet. Then that means you have three lots of just over 20,000 square foot each under the current zoning. But with the flag lot, would that be allowed, Lyle? I guess is my first question.
Yeah. So in either case, whatever the zone on a flag lot, you can't get more than two lots deep. So there's property in front of this that's not owned and controlled by the applicant. That would be, we call it a standard lot, I suppose, through the development. And then behind that, you couldn't have more than two homes, whether it's an RA, R120, R114, R110. It's limited through our ordinance that you either get one flag stem that's 30 feet wide or two that are each 18 feet wide. And so.
Okay, that helped. Yeah. So then, so, so if this, let's, let's just say, just to make that finer point on that, if this lot were you know, 2,000 feet deep. And it was a flag lot with the same width of stem that it currently is, you would only ever be able to fit two lots in there because of the, the width of the stem.
Yes, that's, that's accurate. So the PRUD ordinance does allow for different types of development where you could get, do something different, a private street or others. So if you built a full street into that, you could get additional lots or do something different. But as a flag lot style, just as you stated, whether you've got three acres, 10 acres. No matter how deep it is, it's going to be limited to a double flag stem, which is two lots total. And one of the reasons that this property is under consideration as a flag lot is based on the position of the existing home. It's pretty far west. There's, if you put in a private street and then you're set back from the private street, it's too close based on the width of the typical street and the things that would be there. So theoretically, you could doze the house and then build a private street and maybe look more at the scenario of what Commissioner Hess was talking about, looking at in aggregate homes off of a private street. But utilizing the existing home, really the only way to get that extra lot in there is a double flag lot consideration. So it kind of self-limits what you can do with the property because of the location of that house.
Thank you.
I've got some questions too, but I think I'm going to wait until after we hear from the applicant and then maybe talk or ask a couple of things just before we go to the public hearing part of it. Partly so that I think folks can have that on their minds before they, before we do get to the public hearing. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
I had a question. This is a clarification on the general plan, which we're supposed to, you know, weigh this against. You know, the general plan says that west of I-15 that to consider medium density housing, it has to be along a major street. And so I guess that's, you know, this is where maybe there's some, you know, interpretation. But would R114 be considered medium density?
Not from the definitions I'm familiar with. That's, that's pretty low density still.
Okay, so even low, it's still low. Okay.
I don't know, Lyle, I don't suppose there's anything more specific in any of our codes or ordinances, plans about that?
Intentionally. I think it's intentionally vague.
Yeah.
Allow for interpretation.
Yeah. I mean, 14,000 square feet are in a set, in essence, essentially three lots per acre. That's pretty low density still.
I mean, we've said this before in other requests along these lines. Density is, is entirely a relative term and is a subjective term. There was a time when everything out here was A1 and R120 was dense, overly dense. And so it's, it's a relative term, I think, but that's a question for us to decide whether we think that's dense when we apply it to the general plan language.
The reason I was curious is because I know that like the, maybe that leads into like, what's a major street and so forth like that. I know that I looked up on, from the major street plan that Web Lane is considered a significant local street. And so, you know, that, so would be considered a major street, at least according to my interpretation of that. And so I don't know, that, that might play into the conversation as well.
Right. Good. Any other comments, questions?
I got a question for Lyle.
Yeah, go ahead.
Lyle, have we set a precedent in Kaysville where we've allowed this type of a scenario to play out and have higher density in other locations that has set a precedent?
Yeah, so.
In this same type of scenario?
Sure, let me maybe get to a zoning map and answer that. And just so you're aware, Mr. Chair, that's Commissioner Doxy who has joined us.
I was just going to say, we've got Commissioner Doxy, Jared, joining us now. So Abigail, I guess that means you need to drop off and then we'll have Jared joining us as our regular commission member. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for being in the dugout and available, Abby. We may call on you if you're still going to watch and participate, but I'm going to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll still watch if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, Abby, I got held up. Could you explain the precedent that's, that's been set in this type of scenario, Lyle, and in other parts of Kaysville?
Yes. So I'm going to share my screen and I'll just show the zoning map here in just a moment. And so this is our city zoning map and you can see the colors throughout the map. West of I-15, there's not drastic number of colors, but if you look throughout and you'll see pockets of an R114 in an R120 neighborhood. It's not common. It's probably more recent that even the R1LD has been considered maybe within the past three, five years that we started seeing those zones. We have R1A, R114 here near Angel and 200. There's some R114s within an RA pocket. As far as I don't know if precedence is the word, and that's, that's west of I-15, east of I-15. There are similar things where there are different zones in different areas. And so I would say precedence is there for doing that, considering case by case, different properties and what makes sense. You know, based on the specific characteristics and neighborhood around it. I think it's safe to say that that's not necessarily the reason that you have to do it again, whether it's good or bad precedence. You can look at this on its own merits. How it stands based on the general plan today, you know, that changes over time as well and, and the specific area. But you, you will see that anyway, just with that map, I think to answer your question, there are some different pockets, if, if not super common of different zones throughout.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's move on then to the applicant. Let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Harden, if he is here. Lyle, you're muted.
Okay. I just, I was welcoming and offering him to speak. You are now on live, Mr. Harden, and you're welcome to share what you're hoping to do with the property with the commission at this time.
Okay, thanks. Just to back up what Lyle said earlier. In getting this rezoning, that's all we plan on doing. If approved in the future sometime is to allow one single family residence on that property. I've toyed around with the measurements on that lot quite a bit. And I believe it cut part of that off. I can't remember if it was 0.41 or 42 or something like that, but it was 0.4 something. That lot without counting the flag stem. So to answer your question, Scott, earlier. That, that would be added into that if that were the case, but just to let you guys know, that's all we plan on doing is one single family residence. Entirely nothing to the north of our home. As, as far as the other lot, that's not owned by us. I can't answer to that, but that's our intention is one family home and, and nothing further.
That you're muted, Mr. Chair.
There we go. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harden. Any questions of the applicant from any of the commission members? All right. If not, then I think we are about ready to go to the public hearing portion. This has been advertised as a public hearing. It is a rezon, which is a decision that is ultimately made by the city council. But the planning commission is required to make a recommendation on a request for a rezon. And as part of that consideration, the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing and allow the public to come in and make their comments with regard to the proposal. As has been noted, I think somebody noted this a little bit earlier, we have received a lot of emails and correspondence on this proposal. Before we go to the public comment and maybe as, as a way to maybe help those of you who may be here to make comment about this tonight, when I look at what was in the emails. I think there is an impression that this rezon may open the floodgates for high density housing in West Kaysville. Couple of things to note. First of all, as you just heard the applicant, he is intending to create one, one additional lot. In order to create that lot, given the configuration of his property. He is not able to do it under the R120 zone, and so he's asking for a rezon to the R114 zone, which is 14,000 square feet. Which means you're essentially going from two units per acre to three units per acre. That is not a big change. And then also, we have the option of getting some more detail from the applicant. And enshrining that or asking for a development agreement that would ultimately be up to the council, but. And enshrining that or asking for a development agreement that would ultimately be up to the council, but to put a limitation on that. The PRUD provision of that does allow for some flexibility in how development may occur. But again, there's our limitations on that. And Lyle, can I just ask you, and the PRUD, if a property is zoned PRUD, does it allow for an increase in the normal underlying zoning density?
So the way that the period is written for different development types, so under a common open space or private street subdivision, it states that variations to the standards of the underlying zone can be altered by development agreement. But the flag lot provision does not allow for that type of flexibility. And so you could interpret that in different ways. Kaysville cities, to my knowledge, never given additional density to anything. And so we try to find the zone that technically would accommodate it, consider that, and then work within the densities allowed within that zone. So my answer to that is with the flag lot, no, they wouldn't be able to get more lots than are allowed within the existing zone.
Okay, so we have an additional restriction here in the fact that it's a flag lot, which does not allow for a lot of, certainly not a lot of additional density. Virtually no additional density or very little additional density. So that's the proposal that we're looking at. So with that, I think, I don't know how many are here to speak to this. Lyle, do you have a way to gauge how many people might indicate that they want to speak tonight on this matter?
Yeah, so I'll tell you right now, we've got 53 people participating by Zoom. And what I would probably ask of anyone who's participating, whether you're ready to speak now or not, I've got one hand up currently. If you'd raise your hand, that gives us an idea of how many are interested in sharing comments on this item, whether it's for or against, or just questions and concerns on the proposal. I'll give you a little bit. If you look on the bottom of your screen in the middle, there should be an option to raise your hand. We'll count those and.
All right. So if you're interested in commenting here and making a statement here in the public hearing portion of this item on the agenda, go ahead and indicate by using or touching the icon that you've got for raise your hand. So that we can get an idea of how many people are wanting to comment tonight on this item. The reason we ask that is because if we have a lot, we may need to, to look at putting a limitation on the amount of time that we have each of the speakers take so that we can make sure that we can move through our, our full agenda and get the items completed that we have on our agenda. So if you're interested in commenting. Indicate by doing the raise your hand on the Zoom screen there and then Lyle, if you'll let us know what you're looking at at this point. Allow you to, you're still muted.
As I were cheating back here, talking amongst staff how to handle this. So we found we have, we had six or down to five currently that have raised their hand. So six, so we've got five or six roughly. And then I'll mention, Mr. Chair, I believe anyone who's trying to watch by YouTube, they're still, I guess Zoom, the software is having errors. Streaming to YouTube. And so we've updated our website to encourage people to come onto this platform to join our meeting. It's possible, even though they wouldn't be able to make comments, a few people might trickle in towards the end of this that also have comments or something, but.
But we're not looking at, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we're looking at a huge number that want to comment. And as we begin the, the public hearing part of this, let me just indicate again, we have received a, a large number of emails on this and, and I know I'm assuming I'm thinking that many of the commissioners have read all of those emails and are aware of the, the comments that were being made there. It's part of the reason that prompted my making the statement here that I did at the beginning of this. All right, with that, then let's go ahead and start taking comments. Lyle, I'm going to turn it over to you to go ahead and announce to us who the person is that's going to be speaking and then let them join us and make their comments.
Well, I guess we're, your microphone will cause problems if we turn it on. They might go to here. Just tell me which name you're picking. Okay, I'm going to save this possibly wrong side part is, but Cal and Udi, we're giving you permission now to speak. Make sure you're muted. And and you're welcome to as soon as that mute features off there. You're, you're live, Cal and Udi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I have actually two questions. Number one, how can you put a flag lot on a flag lot? And also when he says, when Mr. What's his name Harden says, he's got an idea of what he is, wants to do. Has he not submitted a plan to you? And if he has not submitted a plan to you, how can you possibly approve something you don't know anything about?
Let me, let me maybe address the last part of that question first. So under a rezoning, when a zone is in place, a property owner is allowed to do anything with their property that is allowed in that zone. And so what we are basically considering in a rezone is what the density and what the kinds of uses are. So how many units could they get in this residential property and that it is residential? That's about all we really technically determine when we do, when we look at zoning. How they do that, the details of putting that together is then handled when they make the application for actual division of the property under the city's subdivision regulations. And that is something that comes subsequently. However, that doesn't mean we cannot look at it now. And I, we may well be in a position of, of after the hearing and after we discuss it, of asking the applicant for more information because we want to know more. So we'll see where that goes as this goes on. As to the question about the flag lot, I'm going to turn that to Lyle and let him address that.
Okay, so yeah, as far as the flag lot within the period ordinance. We have several around Kaysville city. Essentially, instead of one lot being off of a deep driveway, it allows for two lots to share a driveway. Typically, one lot is 30 feet wide and as far as their access out to the street. And then you have that driveway that goes back behind a home to one house. In a double flag lot, they're required to have a 20 foot wide driveway. And then they each kind of share ownership of that same drive, but limits it again to essentially access to two lots off of that shared driveway. So it's, it's accounted for within the provisions of the PRUD ordinance. But again, as because of it's a legislative action, the rezone, it allows us to consider it case by case as to whether or not it's appropriate.
Would that require, would that require that he have an HOA on that then?
No, what they do is there's the shared access easement across that. And with that, there'd be some shared maintenance and responsibility for control of that. They, they could establish an HOA, but typically it's simply done through shared access easements and rights given to each property owner over the drive.
How about access for fire equipment and ambulance and so on? Will he have a 95 foot cul-de-sac at the end of that so that they can turn around? What are the safety aspects that have been taken into consideration on this?
Do you want me to keep addressing the questions at this time, Mr. Chair, or wait to do so?
You know, on that one, I mean, go ahead and address that one. I think, you know, you're probably just looking because we're talking about one or two homes, you're looking at the same requirement as there would be for any home in any driveway.
That's accurate, Mr. Chair. So other than a requirement for a 20 foot wide driveway. And they, if there were a single flag lot, whether we don't have a specification of how large that access could be. But once we're servicing more than one home off of it, we simply require the 20 foot wide drive. And it does not necessitate with that cul-de-sac turnaround or hammerhead. Anything of that nature. So it's, it's much less specific and restricted than a street detail on the, and the types of turnarounds that would be required.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Udi. Thanks. Wow, who's next?
Okay, so we have Megan Murray. So we've given you some permission here to speak. As soon as you're unmuted, you're welcome to address the planning commission.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Murray. Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess hopefully I can ask questions for a lot of the people that are wondering. And I guess they have a problem with you, not with you saying, but it being mentioned that the PRUD is intentionally vague. And then you also said that an owner is allowed to do whatever is allowed in their zone. So if they're granted R-114 and then they sell it and somebody comes in and decides that they want to put in a private lane, as you mentioned, and knock that house down, how many houses are we talking then?
Well, first of all, I don't remember saying that the PRD was vague.
Yeah, it was, it was, I wrote it down intentionally vague was what was said.
I don't, well, I don't recall. I don't know, Lyle, if you mentioned something about that, but the, the PRUD ordinance allows for flexibility. And so there, there's a lot of the details that will be worked out as part of the plan itself that's put together.
And we did state, we may have also referenced the period, I'm not certain, but we did state specifically that the general plan is intentionally vague in previous conversations. I don't know if that's.
Okay, so I guess what we're worried about, I actually am neighbors to the Hardens and friends and they're great neighbors. I guess the concern that has been spoken about and is unfortunately, he's not able to be on the call tonight, but somebody called. And we're told that they would potentially be able to put six units on this property under the PRUD. And that's, I am assuming, as you said, if they changed it to a private lane instead of a flag lot. Is that not true?
Lyle, if you'd address that, but my understanding is that there's not enough room in, on this lot, given the configuration to put in a private lane.
So yeah, I can address hopefully both those questions. So just based on the math of 43,560 square feet per acre times 1.47 acres. 64,000 square feet and you divide that by 14,000. That gives me 4.5 total units. We don't round up. So the R-114 just if we're looking in aggregate, as was stated earlier, could allow as many as four homes on the lot. And then there's width on the ownership of the property, I think to Ms. Murray's comment, if the home were to go, then the commission and council could consider it at a future date, perhaps a private street subdivision.
I see.
With, I would suspect as many as four homes theoretically through another review process. So perhaps one way to address that is, you know, we could get very specific in the conditions of. You know, and that may not be the interest of the commission to even move forward with a recommending approval, but if you do, that could be some stipulations of the conditions is a limit on number of residents, if there are limit on the specific type of development. A request to see that specific plan, et cetera. And ultimately, the period doesn't take effect until final plat's been approved. So if the plat's not moving forward in the manner that's been presented with the flag lot and the two homes, then that wouldn't have to be approved because the period would yet be effective. Until you've seen something that you find acceptable. So.
So there are safeguards there.
There are safeguards there?
Yeah, with what Lyle just explained.
Okay, so I guess, so just to clarify. This would not be allowed to turn into six townhomes under any circumstance.
I don't see how, how it could. Lyle?
Because that's what was told on the phone.
And not with the requested zoning district, so they would have to ask for something completely different to get up to six. House not being there, different proposal. They could do on a private street up to four units and we could consider that in a townhome or twin home style. So that may be more of the conversation that was had, I'm not certain. So yeah, it could be something to your credit and we were saying, Ms. Murray, that would be different than is proposed without the safeguards. And perhaps that's something for the commission to ensure that that's put into place.
I think.
That's something we could consider, Ms. Murray.
Yes, I think everyone and including the Hardens, I think from talking to them that it would be good to have some set boundaries and clarification. I think it would just settle a lot of the confusion. Because I feel like all of us feel if the zoning goes through and, you know, for some reason the Hardens have to move and some developer comes in and then we have no grounds to stand on between them building four townhomes and then the lot next to that building, however many more.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have Sam Browning. Sam, you're given permission to speak now. So just as soon as you're unmuted there, you're welcome to again, address the planning commission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Browning.
All right, I, I do want to say that, so I, I share a fence with the Hardens. I'm I'm fine if they want to put one more home back there. But putting, you know, but I, I share that same concern as, as Megan Murray with, you know, putting in those safeguards for, for the future if for some reason they have to move and develop, and a developer comes in to, to try and increase the density in that area. Under, one, one thing I was not fully clear on is would, under this ordinance, would that allow for an apartment building type setup in this location?
I don't believe so, but I'll let Lyle address that.
Yeah, so let me pull up the ordinance just to be certain on what it states, Mr. Chair, but I believe that the way the PRD ordinance is set up, so it talks about, again, different types of development. So we're, we're really only talking about one, which is the flag lot. And a flag lot subdivision does not allow for two family dwellings or twin homes on the flag lots themselves. So it's, it restrains that to only being single family dwellings. If you go, you know, in the scenario where the homes bulldoze and we're doing a completely different type of layout with a private street. Then I believe that the ordinance speaks to and and I, and I may be better said, my part is to get you an answer in just a minute. I'm working off this computer, running the meeting and trying to.
Don't worry, you're fine.
Let me get the answer to that, but I think it kind of limits it to when you're considering density. Single family zoning areas can only have single family attached housing. So it would still limit into the four units, again, in that private street scenario, but as essentially a townhome style development rather than a fourplex or apartment type structure. And so that, let me clarify that, Mr. Chair, and Sam would be happy to get that answer. Check into the ordinance here.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Browning, or?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Unmute, Lyle.
Thank you.
There you go.
Jennifer, Jennifer, I'm going to say your last name on someone's spew. You're, as soon as you're unmuted, you're welcome to speak.
Yeah, thank. Megan did echo my concern. The one thing I just wanted to clarify in my mind, so if the Hardens did move and we did have someone else come in, it could be up to six homes if they bulldoze their original house there.
No, I think as Lyle explained a little earlier, it looks like the maximum we could deal with there, given a whole different configuration, the development is four.
Four, and that's, but that's with the original home standing. If they bulldozed it, it would leave room, right?
No, no, we're talking about four if they bulldoze the house.
Oh, okay. Well, I think, sorry, because I probably should have, I had to go turn off my water real quick. But I'm thinking the neighbors around would be fine with them building that one home that their intention is to, as long as that, that one home is what is in the specific restrictions when you write up the permit.
Okay, great. Thank you. Lyle, who's next?
Okay, Christie Barton, you're given permission to speak now. So again, as you unmute yourself, once you're. Once you're, she looks like you're, go ahead and address the commission.
Okay, um, thank you for your time. I guess I, I kind of agree with everybody's sentiments. I am, love the Hardens, I think they're great, and if it's just one lot, I think my concern living on web lane is that it makes me nervous that potentially it could be four homes going in the future, the, the traffic on web lane. I would not consider it, I mean, a main thorough fair, it's a small country lane where it narrows, where my kids personally have almost been hit because it's so narrow and small. And so I think any potential to add more, or where long-term there could be a reconfiguration of more homes on that property, then I, I would not want that. But like everyone said, if there's some way that they can zone it where it's very restricted and that it's just the one lot that's allowed, I think, speaking for a lot of neighbors that can't be on this call tonight, I think that is our, our only concern, is that everyone's fine with one, but we're concerned about that if it's rezoned, that if for some reason the Hardens move, then it would potentially be different, given another owner's day on the road. So, I guess if we, if there's any way to zone it, and I guess I have a question, is there, is there not a way that he can have that lot with the zoning that's already, because my, my house is the same way and we are, are, I don't know what we are, but we are not on R14. I know that, and there's my house on web lane and then, and then a flag lot behind me.
Yeah, my understanding, I'll let Lyle address it as well, but my understanding is, is that they're not able to do an additional lot and keep it at the twenty thousand square foot for the zoning, that's why they're asking for the fourteen thousand square foot lot. Lyle?
Yeah, so with, with the drawing that we have, it, it may be close and technically it may be viable. No matter what, in any scenario, they have to have the PRUD to do the flag lot and get an extra home back there. With the flag stem and depending where that final, we'll call it lot separation between the existing home and a new lot ends up being, it may be that there's twenty thousand square feet of properties available for that. He's got enough acreage that, that's a potential. I'd probably just say, based on the drawing we have, I don't know if the, where he's hoping to draw that line gives him enough square footage or not to do it. I think it's, it's close.
Okay.
So, so my question is, if he, if he stays in our, what, twenty-something? If he stays at that zoning and there is enough space to still do what he wants to do, then, then in the future, would someone be able to then like bulldoze the house and create four homes, or would that limit that?
If they stayed at the current zoning, it would limit it.
So then they would only be able to, in the future, put two or whatever, instead of four?
Likely, possibly, yeah. I mean, we'd have to see a specific development proposal, but it would certainly be less.
Yeah, so is there any way that before this is something that's bode upon or approved, or whatever you do, is there a way that we can see exact measurements and plans to see if it would fit on what it's currently zoned at?
It's something we, that the commission may ask for. We'll see where we go as we further consider this, but that's a possibility.
Okay, I think that would ease a lot of minds that we, I think that the, the, the neighbors are just feeling uneasy of, like, we know the Hardens have that intention, but we just are worried about what will happen if Hardens move or, 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 you know, and what would potentially happen with our road being a little country lane already. The traffic on it is ridiculous.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Barton?
Um, I don't think so.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Yes.
Lyle, who's next?
Yeah, so Mr. Jared Carter, I think is the last one that has their hand raised. So we're just working on giving you permission here, Jared, and then as soon as you accept that and unmute yourself, go ahead and address the commission.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, Ms. Barton. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I apologize. I jumped on a little late. I got tied up. I, I want to voice my definite concerns. I know a lot of neighbors might be okay with just one lot being zoned back there. I personally, and my property value, we personally affected by this because my, I personally butt up against that particular lot that they're looking to rezone, so it'll definitely have a direct impact on myself. Probably more than anybody else, to be honest, except for maybe the neighbor to the west, but I definitely have some concerns with how they're trying to, you know, put that lot in there, based on a couple of factors. One, how tight it is back there, the easement from the stream, that impacts. I fought with that stream for the last twelve years and trying to manage that. If they do put a home back there, what, what would they do to be able to protect from that? Because it flood, it definitely will flood. So there's not a home anywhere along the stream that's that close, that could be that close to the stream. So my concern is how are they going to build that that doesn't have an impact on the surrounding neighbors? Myself and the neighbors on the other side of the stream as well, too, that one, that if something is there built, the impact will have around that. The other, I also want to, you know, second the voice of Ms. Barton, as well as that particular area where the entrance is to that home is the narrowest, narrowest part of web lane and definitely the most dangerous part, so adding additional traffic to that, even one additional home adds a security risk unless they plan on, unless you guys plan on developing and putting sidewalks in on that whole side all the way down to widen that out for a safety factor. Because I've seen a lot of kids almost get hit. My wife and I personally walked that road quite a bit, so adding additional traffic, I think is going to be a major issue there as well. But again, those are my types of concerns, just honestly, one home back there alone. We moved into this area and picked this particular house because we wouldn't have any neighbors to the back of us, and again, this definitely have a negative impact on my property value, putting a home right in my backyard as well, too, and that's, again, that's why we selected to move to Caseville rather than anywhere else, so those, just want to voice my concerns, but primarily, what is, what or any thoughts have been made about the easement for the, the stream and the impact that'll have on the surrounding neighbors? Has that been taken into consideration?
At this point, no, because we're, that is something that's usually addressed at the point when the actual property is being divided under the city's subdivision requirements, but it's certainly something we could talk about.
Okay. And as right now, I know, like I said, some, well, the neighbors already said they're okay with that, and granted, the Hardens, me personally, if the Hardens live there, doesn't live there, it doesn't really matter to me, to be honest, because the way the zoning is, the way zoning is, once you guys set that, that's in, that's the way it's written, so I know they might not be any intentions, but if, you know, trying to, one, one lot alone in there is, I think will be very, very difficult. If trying to add more will be, I think, a major, major problem and cause you guys quite a bit, quite a few headaches in the long run. So that's pretty well my comments and my input that I have personally, so.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Carter. Appreciate your comments. Lyle, do we have anybody else?
So, right now I have Kristi Barton, who's raised her hand again, and then I just also wanted to mention, we've had a few participants join since we started this conversation, so I may just mention, anybody who hasn't already known what we're up to, that maybe just new to the meeting, if you're interested in sharing a comment on this item, it's the web lane consideration, you can raise your hand now. Otherwise, if you wish to hear from Ms. Barton again, she's currently the only hand.
Sure, let's hear from Ms. Barton again.
Hello, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry to be that person that talks twice. So I just forgot to mention, I, some neighbors surrounding me that couldn't make the call wanted certain things mentioned, and I, I forgot one. And then into what the gentleman before, I forgot his name, was saying about the, the traffic, it is a huge concern for a majority of the people that live on web lane. And there's a, a traffic study that was submitted last night that we, my, my neighbor across the street submitted, and in one hour, I just think that you should consider this, the traffic on web lane as further development happens on this road, but there was, in one hour during quarantine and not the busiest time, was two hundred and fifty-five cars counted in one hour. So we receive a lot of traffic. I think the average on a, on a road like ours is considered, as was told to my neighbor, was eighty cars, and we're at two hundred and fifty-five. So to add more to that is a huge concern for people that live on this street and that have to deal with the speeding. I mean, I sat in my living room just the other night and watched a police officer within a half hour pull six people over and just did a circle in front of my house, pulling speeders over. So adding more is a huge, a huge issue, I think, for a lot of neighbors on web lane. And then the other thought mentioned by my neighbor, just to the east of me, he said that his concern is adding more, and I don't know the logistics of how this happens, this is just something he wanted mentioned, was the, the water and the sewer systems along here was only meant for, they've been here for over like thirty years, and so they said that when they first built here and there was only the original five homes on this road, that the water pressure has decreased significantly, and so his concern would be, what about that infrastructure and how that would be affected? And would we lose more water pressure? And can it handle sewer, you know, additional sewer lines with what's already existed on this small country lane?
Okay.
So it's just something that I think he wanted to be considered before you move forward. Yeah.
Appreciate the comments. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Lyle, anybody else?
I think that's the, concludes those who are interested in speaking. Well, I did want to maybe respond to Mr. Browning, who had a question. I've had the time to look through the ordinance to address that regarding, could it be an apartment building or, you know, something different? And so the R1 zone, as far as use is allowed, is limited to single-family dwellings. The language that I was thinking about is specific to a common open space subdivision, wherein it says essentially the use is allowed within the zone can be considered, so if it were a different zone, you could consider in an R2 zone, two family dwellings, or three zone, or our four zone, four family dwelling, et cetera. And in that case, it allowed for the consideration of attached structures, single-family attached, as it would be permitted. But that's only in the common open space subdivision style development, and it's only single-family attached dwellings, not apartment or duplex type scenario, so hopefully that addressed that question, Mr. Browning. In this case, really, he's stuck at single-family dwellings, in particular, he's stuck because of the flag lot limitations there that are being considered.
Okay, thank you.
So no matter what, under the, just to clarify from my understanding, no matter what, because of the way things are currently, he would only be allowed two homes back there, no matter how it's rezoned? Or up to four if a road is put in?
That's correct. No matter what, he's stuck with single-family dwellings, and because of the current configuration and request, he's going to be limited to two. And then if another proposal were to come before the commission, to kind of start from scratch with a private street, up to four would be the max based on the density. And, and just maybe as a comment to some of the concerns from those listening, so I've had probably several hours of conversation from the public after we sent out our notices, so we'll forget certain details, but we've got a savvy group that I know is listening and participating, and lots of questions have been asked. Six units has been thrown out a lot. I think part of that consideration may have been the acreage that is not owned in front of this property. So that's not being considered as part of the rezon this evening, but I think that may have been part of that conversation is if you included that, assuming that goes in R114 someday, how many units could then be there? So I, I I think that may address some of the neighbors' questions of how six came out of part of a conversation at one point. And it was including property that is not controlled by Mr. Harding and is not under consideration, so it is for, or is not even the current request, but four is the max scenario for his property.
Right, okay, great, thank you. Anyone else, Lyle?
Okay, so Mr. Chair, we're getting, it looks like the same people raising hands again. I've got Megan Murray and Jennifer Spew. So if you wish to hear from someone again, they, we've got two more.
Let's just go ahead and take a minute or so for each of them, and then, then I think we're, we're ready to move on, so Ms. Murray, let's go ahead to you and see what additional comment you have.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to, again, ask the question if there is a way to make this more specific so that it's not so vague, so that we can limit this to that one lot.
That's something we can consider as a commission, and I'm sure we'll discuss that here when we get into our discussion portion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spew?
Probably okay with just the one lot. After listening to Jared Carter's explanation at the creek, my creek has the duct system, or my lot has the creek run through my lot and the duct system, and my, our house has flooded three times, and we will be further away from the creek, and we actually have less trouble flooding on this side than they would on that side. And so I just wanted to echo the Carter's experience that they will have water damage, and putting a house that close to the stream will cause all kinds of damage, and they won't have access to bring in the county's tools and trucks to clean up it. Like here, we have our duct systems and they can kind of control it, but I have flooded three times living here in five years, and I am higher up in elevation, and we have the system right there to access. They won't have any of that, and water damage will flood that plane pretty considerably, so I will echo Jared's thoughts, and that definitely will be something to consider, because that will cause huge, huge problems, because it's been a huge headache for us on this side.
Okay, thank you. I think that's something that will be, certainly will need to be looked at at the point when they actually go through the process to divide the lot and meet all of the requirements of the city's ordinances with, for development. Okay, Lyle, if there's nobody else?
Yeah, that looks like everything, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll conclude the public hearing portion of this. We'll turn back to the applicant, Mr. Harden, and see if he has any additional comments.
I don't think I had anything additional to say other than reiterate what we said before, we plan on one home sometime in the future, and that's where we are, so we don't plan on selling our home anytime soon, so.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Harden. All right, with that, then, let's turn now to discussion by the commissioners with regard to this application. Commissioners?
Yes, this is Quill. I'll start first. So I did take a drive out there, so walked around, so appreciate the neighbors not calling KPD on me, but there, there's definitely a legitimate issue about where the road narrows and where it widens. It narrows basically at the Hardens property and then to the southwest of that, and then opens up immediately after border of Mr. Harden's property. So, yeah, that's definitely a legitimate concern, but, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out here and. you know, I appreciate everybody coming out here and uh raising their concerns and uh I think they will be able to talk amongst uh commissioners and figure something out.
Yeah, with regard to the road, Lyle, just a question for you. I is, I mean, the property to the north, I guess it is across the street across Webb. When that develops, um is it anticipated that Web Lane will be further improved at that point?
Yeah, so if and when that property develops on the north side of the street, we would require that developer to improve their side of the street. Um, the city um anyway, we would have to look at the south side of the street to determine whether or not the city at future dates able or willing to participate in that. Typically, we let developers build and improve our streets and widen them. So through the subdivision process, we would look at this and Mr. Harding would be essentially responsible for his uh property that's adjacent to Web Lane. Um, so it kind of ends up piecemealing a little bit. So occasionally we'll do cash and lieu or an agreement that when we're ready to do it more holistically, that they participate for their share. Um, if the council determines that, you know, something needs to be done, Sunset Drive, Shepherd Lane, for example, or recent projects where the city's determined, yeah, it's important that we get that right away completed. And the city's taken that on as projects. Um, that could be the case with with Web Lane. I'm I'm not aware of specific plans or dates to improve that at this time.
Okay. All right, what else, commissioners?
I have a question for Lyle. I have some comments, but question first and maybe let others go first too, but so Lyle, i- if this, I know this is not what's presented before us now, but a lot of the concerns from the neighbors have been that uh you know, what could happen if the applicant sells or moves or whatever? And the existing home is raised and and we have a blank slate. Um, if that were the case, we have a blank slate and they the new owner wants to put in a private lane. Um, is the width of that private lane, the acreage, the square footage that that private lane takes up, is that um excluded from the lot sizes that are then created?
It can be. How's that for an answer? So we'll see private street development in two different ways. Um, probably the most common on something that's small would be that the lots actually encompass the street. So each owner kind of owns a portion of the street in front of them, so you could put that street into the calculation of the lot, total lots. Um, so again, you're just taking total acreage divided by fourteen thousand square feet. Um, we will also see uh this private street owned in common. Uh, we're in HOA set up and that's how it's maintained and taken care of. So it could go in either fashion, and I think that in those cases, either way, as the commission and council look at those proposals, that's where you get on case by case look to see is there a problem in this case with how it's proposed. You're including the lots uh and the road in your lot size, so therefore it's too small for this area. Uh, you would have the right to say no to that uh based on the PRD discretion that you essentially the council holds as a legislative action.
Okay, thanks.
Um, maybe just to give you my thoughts, some of my thoughts on this. I I think it's pretty limited on what can happen here unless, of course, the applicant were to tear down the house or a future owner were to tear down the house. And even then, even with the R one fourteen zone, we're talking at most four houses on the property, but that's not the proposal that we've got. Uh, the proposal is to put probably one additional lot on this property. Um, I I would like to maybe see some more detail um on how that lot could and would be configured. As Lyle had mentioned, it might be possible to configure the lot so that it could be done even in the R one twenty zone. And in that case, we wouldn't need to do a rezon to R one fourteen. Um, but it certainly still does need uh either way, from what I understand, the PRD, PRUD uh overlay part of that, which is essentially a rezon to do that. So I I guess I'd like to see some more detail, maybe something a little bit more finite as to what's being proposed or what could be proposed there and then uh then make our consideration based on that. Um, and and get the additional detail uh and in and embody that in probably like a development agreement that would go with the rezon. Uh, and and to do that, I think we should incorporate whatever the more detailed uh configuration is. So that's that's kind of the thought that I've had. Commissioners, other comments?
Yeah, actually, well, that was kind of my comment is or that was something that was going through my head as well, and where it's so close to twenty thousand square feet. Um, Lyle, I believe it made a comment that it's it's potentially possible to do it under the underlying zoning as it is, and then that would just require a PRUD to put over the R one twenty in order to require the two flag lots, and correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, but if if that's the case and they can I put one additional lot in under the underlying zoning as it is today, that would be favorable to me. It would reduce a lot of um confusion or possibility in the future on what else could do. And and I I also think that it would remove a one and a half acre R one fourteen little spot there that um you know is could potentially influence that A five and the other A one and whatever else happens in this area coming down the line in the future. I agree with you, Will, if the R one fourteen is is really low, you know, low density, so I'm I'm not overly concerned about that, but I do respect the the neighbors and their concerns there. Um, so I I would like to see more detail with some drawings that have uh even basic, you know, basic dimensions, some calculable areas for us to consider. Um, calculatable areas for the flag lot or the flag itself and you know kind of a whole plan to come along with this rezon request.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think we I think I can echo that too. I'd like to see that. I mean, I think Scott hit all all the same points on the head that I was concerned about. Um, and I, you know, looking at this, I think we want to keep the density, you know, if we can do that, I'd also probably like to see something engineered. An engineer drawing that can approximate a better layout for us so that it it has a better um so we have a better idea of what we're looking at and see if we can't get it into that R one twenty zone.
When you say engineered, Steve, are you talking about the dimensions for the lot?
True, a good professional engineer drawing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Maybe just to play devil's advocate, though, I mean, what if we require the homeowner to do that? And they come back and just tell us that they want to draw it so the the line so that it requires a R one fourteen? Because that's the way they want the lot to lay out, not because it's what allow, I mean, obviously, they could draw it, make it happen, right? It's just but it really comes down to what they want to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the the property owner has the wherewithal to ask for whatever they really want to try and do. Then it's just up to to us and and ultimately the city council whether they would go along with that. Any other comments?
Um, so I have some thoughts, a number of thoughts. Um, where do I start? Um, so we really, we're really talking about the difference. Well, first of all, actually, before I even get there, what's proposed is two lots, okay? That is less than with, I mean, for all intents and purposes, less than what could be done under an R one twenty, but I recognize that with this configuration, he has to, the applicant has to look for R one fourteen, but we're talking about two lots. But let's set that aside for a moment because there are concerns about what could be done if the applicants or per current owner sells. Um, and so we have a blank slate and that and I and I heard from what Lyle said earlier, if we if if they sell and a new owner comes in and there's a blank slate. Um, we're talking about the difference between three lots under the R one twenty if they made a private lane or four lots under the R one fourteen if they had a private lane. Um, or in the worst case scenario, if you want to say worst, uh and that front parcel gets sold, the front parcel is, I think, point four six acres. We're talking about six lots, six lots under an R one fourteen of about point three two, so fourteen thousand square feet is point three two of an acre. Six lots of single family homes, not attached, not townhomes, not multifamily. Uh, six lots is is the very worst case scenario if the front lot gets sold. I don't think that is, it sounds like it's not going to be in the future, or at least in the foreseeable future. But um let's just go with that, okay? Let's call that quote unquote the worst case scenario. Some might say that's a good thing, but let's call it the worst case scenario. Is that really as bad as we're all saying? Let me make a comparison in the very vicinity here. Okay, so um off of Smith Lane where Knight's Way goes into Tyler Meadows, right across from Centennial's uh basketball courts outside and their their uh you know, fields in the back of Centennial Junior High. There are uh eight lots right on Knight's Way that come on that come into Tyler Meadows off of Smith Lane. Those eight lots are all less the first six lots are less than point three two of an acre. And then the two lots furthest in, so lots seven and eight, I would call it, are uh respectively point three three of an acre on one and then point three five an acre on the other. Okay? So there's eight lots of essentially a third of an acre. Um, now, if you just cut that in half and say we're only looking at one side, there's four four homes, single family homes lined up on third of an acre lots. Picture those homes going into Tyler Meadows. That's what could go worst case scenario over here on a private lane. That's the only difference. Tyler or Knight's Way is a public road. This would be a private lane. I recognize as Lyle said, that that some of that private lane would be eaten up or some of the lot size will be eaten up in the private lane, so they might be functionally a little smaller than point three two of an acre. But to me, the setbacks are all the same, the lot widths are the same. The 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 look of it is essentially the same as over there or or very similar, in my opinion. So i- in light of all that, and 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 I would I would I would request uh anyone from the the staff or the or the commission to correct me if I'm wrong, please. But in light of that, I think this is much ado about nothing. Um, worst case scenario, that's what we're talking about. Single family homes that look relatively similar to the to the place that I just described. And and as as a result of that, I I I recognize that, you know, getting more information could be helpful and uh you know, I'm not like vehemently opposed to that, but I don't think we even need that, in my opinion. Um, we're only talking about the proposal, which is two lots, but if we go beyond that, the worst case is not that bad. It's one more lot than could be on there if we had a blank slate. And I recognize that there are traffic concerns on Web Lane. Uh, I I trust that those are all accurate and I and I think those are concerns. Um, but one extra lot um is not going to have uh such a significant effect that that I think we should deny this. Um, and then just my last final comment, I guess, is uh flag lots in and of themselves are not inherently bad. By my count on King's Court, there are four flag lots. Uh, there might even be some people listening in on this this uh via Zoom who live on one of those flag lots. Flag lots aren't inherent or is a development proposal like this inherently bad on Web Lane further east closer to Flint Street, Sunrise Lane is R one LD. So yeah, it's not R one fourteen, but there is a those are essentially flag lots or they're like a private lane, kind of what we're talking about here. And there's a third acre lot on there. Now there's some bigger lots on there, but that's that's the general tenor of what I think we're looking at. And it it's far afield from some of the concerns we read in in the emails, which were townhomes, attached homes, apartments, you know, uh Web Lane is going to be overrun with traffic here. I mean, to be honest, the the bigger concern that the neighbor should be talking to the city right now about and involved in the general plan amendment process, which we're going to be going into uh in the coming months. If the citizens are worried about this, come let your voice be heard about what you think should go on the north side of Web Lane. That is going to have a big impact on the neighborhood and the traffic and all of that. This little this little uh rezon request is a drop in the bucket compared to that. And so I I'm prepared to, I in my opinion, we should approve it now, and I don't need extra, I don't need any extra uh information. Um, and I'm comfortable with it being worst case scenario for lots under the R one fourteen. So that's what I've got.
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate those comments. Uh, other comments? Any other discussion by a commission?
Yeah, this is Quan. I agree with the vice chair. I am comfortable with moving forward. Having said that, is there a hybrid approach where we can still move forward, make the recommendation to the city council, but with certain limitations to address the neighbors' concerns?
What kind of limitations would you think, Quan?
Uh, I think specifically just for one more unit to be built.
Oh, you mean limited to that?
Right, right.
Uh, I mean, that could be part of the recommendation, certainly.
Yeah. That's, I think, under those conditions, I'd be comfortable with uh moving it forward.
Okay. Others?
This is Commissioner Doxy. Um, I would like, I would feel better pursuing the approach that the chairman recommended that let's let's measure twice and cut once. And if we can, if we can get the additional lot with the current zoning and the ac- applicant's happy with that, then it it saves a lot of frustration from a lot of neighbors and it's going to hold us up uh not that long. And I think that's worth pursuing.
Okay, thank you. Others?
I I think, I mean, uh, you know, uh notwithstanding everything that I just said, I I think uh what Commissioner Doxy said is a reasonable approach. And if, in fact, that can happen, that solves a lot of headache.
Okay. Little hard to have this discussion as we're all kind of sitting separately in our own rooms, but uh uh any other comments or discussions? Um, is anyone ready to try a motion? Oh, don't be so shy.
Um, you know, given, given uh Commissioner Sunloft's comments, I, you know, I really agree. I think that I I think that this is both in the applicant's uh current application, it's going to fit in with the neighborhood. Um, if you look, you know, immediately to the east on Bishop Street, there are five homes from front to back, uh from Bishop Street to Holmes Creek. If it were six, um, you know, short of like an aerial image, you probably wouldn't notice six lots versus five lots on that same type of configuration with the a private street going back. And even that has so many hurdles to clear, like owning the par- the property to the north, taking down a house, all of the structures on what looks to be maybe a swimming pool in the aerial image and then reconfiguring everything. So I, you know, the likelihood to me is that this would be subdivided, a home would go up in the back and houses have a lifespan of a hundred plus years. It would probably stay as two lots on that flag forever. So in light of that and to try to move the meeting along, I would recommend that we approve, and let me get my packet out. That we
Your motion would be to recommend approval?
I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of a rezon of approximately one point four seven acres of property at fourteen thirteen West Web Lane from R one twenty to R one fourteen and include the PRUD overlay zone.
With no further stipulations, no?
I don't, you know, I I honestly don't, I don't I don't, you know, I, I honestly don't, I don't know how you stipulate that you rezon to an R one fourteen. But then require them to maintain only one additional lot. Um, if that's, if, you know, and I, so I, I guess my motion would stand as it is. And if people want to consider how to amend that, I'd be open to friendly for amendments. Um, but otherwise, I think, you know, to move the meeting along, I'll make a motion, and if that motion fails, then we can consider a table and uh. Uh, you know, bring back more information.
Okay, so Scott has made a motion to recommend the rezoning as proposed, no additional stipulations. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
A second from Commissioner Sunloft? Now, discussion to that motion. Commissioners, is there any discussion to that?
Yes, I'd still like to uh, get that stipulation to limit it to one, only one other unit be developed. Uh, I think that would address the, the concerns of uh, Mr. Hardin's neighbors. I mean, that I think was the biggest concern out of all the comments I saw and put together. That's the big one, so why not do it? Um, I'd be comfortable with that. And then my follow up question is, Commissioner Hess, if your. Motion, for whatever weird reason, fails, uh, what's the recourse for Mr. Harden? Do we, can we still table it, or?
Yeah, we can, yeah. A motion fails, we, we would be open to other motions.
Okay.
Um, I, I do just want to point out on that, that, that currently, the property owner could develop three lots. That they could do a private street and three lots. So we're effectively upzoning the property to smaller lots, and then restricting it to fewer. Than they can get today, which just seems like a. It's a, it's a backwards way to get one additional lot. It's a lot of process in order to do something that is, in effect, stripping away a property right that the, the property owner holds today. Under R one twenty. Um, and with, you know, maybe there's some flexibility in codes or something, but it, it feels like a. It feels like a difficult process way to do something that, you know, we should potentially have been able to approve under the R one twenty. And just a different, simpler configuration. But that's my only comment to that.
Okay. My thought on this is that um, I, I still, I guess I would like to see just some additional. For, some additional work to be done on the proposal to see what would work for the property owner. And it may be, it may, it may be that there is, would not be a rezon to R one fourteen that would be needed. And my guess is that the council will ask for that, or would want to see that, and so I'm just kind of anticipating that and saying. You know, we're the workforces for the, the council. Uh, maybe we should have a look at that before we make a recommendation on that, but that's my thought. Um, and Commissioner Quan is asking that perhaps the motion include a limitation to one additional lot to be created. Are there other uh, points of discussion here by the commission on this motion? All right, if there are not, then I guess, and uh, Scott is the maker of the motion. Is there anything that has persuaded you to, to add or change anything to your motion?
No, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna keep it as is. I think if, if the desire of the commission is to see it as one lot only. Then, um, I would be more open to pulling my motion. And motioning to just table the item pending additional information coming back to see if we can. If the applicant can fit one additional lot under the standard R one twenty zoning.
Okay, thanks for that. Any other comments before we go to a vote, commissioners? All right, just to reiterate, the motion is to recommend the rezoning as proposed with no additional stipulations or conditions. Uh, we'll begin the roll call vote with Steve.
Hi.
He votes aye. Let's go to Scott.
Aye.
Scott votes aye. Toby?
Aye.
Toby votes aye. Quan?
Aye, no.
Quan votes no. Josh?
Aye.
Josh votes aye. Jared?
Nay.
Jared votes nay, and uh, I as the chair will vote no as well. Just to explain my no vote, I'm thinking that we, as I indicated. That I'd like to see some additional detail to see if it's even necessary to do the rezon from R and fourteen. But the motion does pass on a vote of four to three. So with that, the uh, the proposal will be passed on to the city council for their consideration. Uh, Lyle, when, when do you think the council might take this up?
The next time the council meets is June fourth. Uh, if the mayor thinks it's ready for that meeting, it would be on that. Otherwise, it's two weeks after that date, which would be the eighteenth. Um, I think this case, we can likely have it ready for that meeting on the fourth. Uh, just up to the mayor, she looks over the agenda if it's, uh, wants to be accepted to that. And we'll, we'll pass along this recommendation. I appreciate the explanation of the votes. Um, we can also try to put something together with the applicant ahead of that meeting for the council, perhaps it shows the details for them. Sounds like it was a big piece of this conversation, so I think you're.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Harden. We appreciate uh, your time and uh. Look forward to um, having that move on to the council for their consideration. Thanks all. All right, that was one item. Our next item. Is another public hearing in consideration of a rezon of approximately ten acres. Uh, at approximately seventeen hundred south, five fifty west. From the R A and A five residential and agricultural zones to the R one six. Single family residential zoning. The applicant is Ivory Homes, uh, the representative, oh no, I'm sorry, the owner is Chase Freeburn. And uh, with that, let's go to the staff for their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, let's make a correction on that. Probably the way the report reads looks that way. So Chase Freeburn is a representative with Ivory Homes.
Oh, all right. Okay, thank you.
Anderson family owns this property, and they've been working with them in consideration of possible options. And so this is the property located on the southwest edge of town, uh, here on the map. Again, roughly ten acres, uh, just north and east of the Sunset Equestrian Center. The property surrounded by Sunset Equestrian Estates to the north, uh, which is the R A, uh, bright green zoning district. Uh, this property includes some of that as well, uh, as well as A five, that's heavy agricultural zone property. Um, which is the Equestrian Center to the south, uh, the other heavy A five in the area is the sewer district. Again, to maybe help orient. And the applicant is requesting a rezon to the R one six uh, for the whole property. Um, they've put together a concept of what ultimately they would try and, uh, like to try and do on the property. Uh, what you have here before is not possible under a straight R one six. This is a private street, common open space subdivision that would require a P R U D. Um, but they wanted to show the commission, uh, ultimately what they are thinking about. Um, and as we've talked to them and other developers in this area over the several years. Um, you know, staff will defer to the council ultimately, and then by the recommendation of the commission as to what zoning is appropriate in the area. Um, so we don't generally make a recommendation regarding that and what's best. Again, we'll leave that to your deliberation and thoughts regarding this location. And how it fits with the general plan. Um, but we have been telling people for years that the actual development of the property. Uh, would need to wait until additional access is brought into the site, uh, for emergency access and so forth. As right now, the only way out is north, uh, onto, I think it's Seabiscuit. Um, so what they're hoping to do, Ivory Homes is familiar with that, stands from staff, uh, but knowing. Considerations, roads, West Davis. Straight going through this area, uh, in the next few years, provide opportunity for that additional access. And so Ivory Homes can speak to it more, but I think they're trying to set kind of the initial stage and expectation of what the property might become. Um, if the R one six were permitted and pursued, then they would come back at a later date when they're ready to do a subdivision with a P R U D. Um, again, under a scenario where this type of density or something is acceptable to Kaysville City. Um, so I won't get too bogged down in the details of this concept, but it shows, um. You know, ultimately, what they're trying to accomplish, this is a similar product that they can speak to, it was done, uh, within Park City area. Um, what's more important with the R one six at this particular stage, uh, it's a residential, single family zoning district. Uh, the six is for a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. It's essentially seven unit per acre development. Um, the difference between this and the other R one zones, again, it's the lot size itself. It has smaller side yards, so instead of an eight foot side yard, it's a, uh, five foot side yard requirement. Uh, I think, believe it's a twenty five foot front yard, and also, um. Guess I'd have to check the frontage requirement, uh, on my phone here and get back with you, but it does have a smaller frontage requirement. Uh, than the other R one zone. So again, accounting for a smaller lot, allowing to put a smaller home on those. And so that's what we're looking for this evening from the commission is a, a recommendation, again, to forward to the city council. Um, if additional information uh, is needed, uh, again, just as was done with the previous discussion. Uh, that can be something you ask for from the applicant, and with that, I'll close my remarks, be open to any questions and. After you hear from the applicant, just remind you as stated of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. Um, I, I do have a question, and we'll also have other questions from the commissioners, but. So at this point, they're asking for the zoning, but um, don't have really definite plans yet. Can you give us an indication of what, are there plans for future access in this area? I've been out to the area, I've taken a look at it, and, and I have to say, I, I do have concerns. Almost under any development proposal for some of this property, for the remaining undeveloped property, as to how access will be accomplished. In that area, and so are, are there future access development, uh, plans for out here?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be completely direct, but Angel Street, um, we'll start drawing on here. Uh, again, obviously, very rough, as planned to be extended down to Sunset Drive. And then further south, um, south of Shepherd Lane, that would connect on to a new interchange with the West Davis Corridor. Uh, so with a new freeway that will sit something like this and a new interchange here. Kaysville City has uh, got significant funding and still working on the details of building a frontage road. Uh, roughly from Angel Street, you know, underneath this private road, that's south of Seabiscuit. Into Sunset and further south to a road that will connect through here, this corridor.
Another corridor will connect into.
Shepherd.
That'll be the Shepherd Lane interchange, connecting on the south end of K.
So Lyle, uh. Angel will not wrap around and, and connect with essentially where Shepherd ends there. At the entrance to the sewer district, it's going to go south of that?
So yeah, Sunset and Shepherd merge here.
Yeah.
And so it will connect into Shepherd, so you could either continue on to Shepherd and, but also further south to the new interchange.
Uh, okay, I see. So my, my question is.
I see, all right.
My, my question is, it, Angel wraps around and if, i- i- essentially makes a four way intersection at Shepherd, Sunset. And Angel, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and they just, you know, the, the Farmington and Kaysville. Um, I think signed the memorandum of understanding with UDOT to move ahead with that road. Which then facilitates the funding for Angel moving ahead with the further funding. So this is all, there's a couple pieces that have all been working together on this for years, and this is all coming together. So this is all works in the, for, in the road infrastructure for the cities to get this all done in conjunction with West Davis.
Um, but uh, that alignment of Angel's extension. Uh, takes out not only the Sunset Equestrian Center, but probably some other properties that are going to have to be worked out. And right now, there hasn't been any of that taking place in my accurate in saying that.
Uh, partly, so my drawing, yeah, impacted a lot of them. So it, it does impact the Sunset Equestrian Center, and we're in negotiation and still figuring out with the city council. Um, how to, how to manage and handle that, and find something that works for both the city and property owner. Um, other than that, it does impact other property owners, and not necessarily other structures or buildings. Uh, so it's a little further south than I drew, but this area here kind of clips. So we've been in talks both with the sewer district and others, um, again, so it's still moving forward. But the anticipation for this project is, uh, that provides. You know, this opportunity for a second outlet. Um, that street, five fifty west is not an improved street currently. Um, but now you have somewhere to improve it to create additional connectivity in the, in the area, and the assumption would be in the next. Uh, three years, give or take, that that. Uh, opportunity would be available to provide the additional access into this general vicinity.
So you're saying five fifty west is um, city owned at this point, the property?
Correct, so it's not dedicated right away, but Kaysville City owns the, the property underneath the street. Yeah, so we're. Um, sorry, juggling between pictures here, so you can tell it's just a, a dirt road currently.
Yeah, yeah.
Partial, and that parcel is going to my Kaysville City.
So I've got another question too, where Mayor Drive. Um, where it then intersect, intersects with Seabiscuit and then continues on to a partial cul-de-sac there. And then there's a lane that goes on from there to Sunset. Is, is that planned to ever be made a, a through street on that private lane?
Kaysville owns that too.
The city owns that as well?
Well, the portion be, where Mayor Drive ends and connects to Sunset.
Yeah.
Strip there.
Ah, I see. So, and is, is the plan to turn that into a street?
Well, so the city controls it. I don't think there are specific plans as to his exact future destiny, if we'll, we'll call it that. But that's an option. Uh, I think there are some initial concerns of Sunset Equestrian Estates was developing. Um, on how. Property owners in these farms to the south could access that property. Um, it's not an improved section of the street yet, um, on that part that the city owns, and so it was. Wasn't much of interest in keep letting a ton of traffic through, and also its alignment with Burton Lane. To the east is less than ideal. It's, it's pretty.
Great there.
Yeah, there's quite the great difference going up, and so it's, it's a possibility, and, and that's. Those are things that are, had to be figured out, you know, in great detail at some point, but it's an option that that could continue through there. Otherwise, perhaps other properties as they develop would also provide additional access out to Sunset. Um. So it's a bit of an unknown, I guess you could say, but the potential is certainly there.
Okay.
Uh, this is Quan. I've got a question now. I drove down there today, and so where five fifty intersects Mayor and Seabiscuit. You can't go into Seabiscuit because they got these, uh, you know, what I call little mini key walls, uh, when I say it's overseas. Is that? Well, is that gonna go away, or what's going on with that?
Yeah, eventually, that would be the idea, is this, they're a temporary uh, solution to some of the concerns that have been. Uh, that have come up with development in its current state. But as items change there, it would be my expectation that those uh, barriers and blockades would, would be removed. And that would open access through, through this area, and so ultimately, that still is yet to be determined by the council on how that will shape, shape out. Generally speaking, we would prefer, once we know the road conditions are appropriate and such. Uh, I, I guess I'll state my preference, uh, as much connectivity and route options as possible is, is better. And so we would want to connect and, or open up those routes.
So based on the map that you have up there right now, or that uh, presentation, can you draw where? Um, the, I guess, Angel Street gets extended?
Yeah, so it would come. Something to this effect.
Okay, got it.
And um, there will be a trail along this, and then it would be essentially like a frontage road, two lane facility. That heads down the Sunset Shepherd Lane, and then down to the West Davis Corridor interchange. And so this ultimately would open up. And connect. All the way through north to south, uh, in my opinion, as development starts to occur, and, and the street improvements are made that. Uh, make appropriate access and safety, console.
And again, the entire length of five fifty is public, or is it? And again, the entire length of 550 is public or is it partial public and then private?
It's a private lane right now, so it's just, it's a private property owned by Kaysville City Corporation. We have easements over for the properties around it, so they do have the right to access and drive on it. But because the city owns it, you know, to be seen, it would likely become a public right of way.
Okay, other questions? The commission have for staff? Okay, if there are none, then let's go to the applicant here from Mr. Freeburn.
All right, Mr. Freeburn, it looks like you have permission to speak now. So once you're muted, you're welcome to please address the commission.
Yeah, Chair Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Lyle, for the explanation. Essentially, just want to echo what Lyle said without being too redundant, but this is a long-term planning on our end. We, we realize we're not going to be building homes tomorrow or anytime soon. This is a proposal looking into the future to see, you know, what this area might look like. It's going to be changing over the next few years with the West Davis Corridor, with Angel Street. And we're, we're just wanting to get the zoning in place now while we wait for some of the infrastructure to come to us. We've been working with the Anderson family for some time and we felt that now is the best time to move forward with a rezone while we're waiting for some of the heavier infrastructure to come to our way. But essentially this project that we're proposing, you know, the, the concept before you is, is just the end goal. But the R1-6 is what, you know, we're, we're trying to shoot for to, as a start. And this is product that we've been building in Park City. And they're high-end, single-family detached cottage homes. And they're by no means affordable housing. These would range in Kaysville between 400 and 600,000, which is not affordable housing, but it surprisingly still is more affordable than some of the product in Kaysville now. So it is more affordable than probably what's around it, but it's not starter homes. And really nice homes that we've been doing in Park City, that's the vision we have for the property. That's not to say that there's, there's still some, you know, decisions to be made as far as, you know, the PRUD overlay, which would allow us to do that plan or not, but we thought the R1-6 was a good place to start. And we welcome any questions you have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Freeburn. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Doxy. I've got a few questions.
Sure.
I live just a few blocks from here and so I know this area well and we were the second home in this whole subdivision that's now over 400. So we've seen this whole area develop around us in 13 years. And those that know me know that I am a big believer in affordable housing. And I think that Kaysville for too long has not had enough affordable housing. However, I'm also concerned with my neighbors about the density of what's being proposed. And I would like to ask the applicant if they've considered other densities. And if they have, could he explain what they have also considered?
At this point, this is the vision we've had for the property for some time and we, you know, we've certainly looked at other options, but this is the only option we've really seriously considered at this point.
Jared, any other questions or follow-up?
No, I respect his, his answer. I, I'm just wondering if this is a, and this is just my own thinking, so forgive me. I'm just wondering if this applicant is submitting this, which I think is a pretty extreme departure from what our current makeup of our subdivision is in Sunset Equestrian Estates. It's such an extreme departure. And again, as I said, I'm all for more affordable housing, but it's, this backs up to homes that most of them are close to a half acre. It just seems too extreme of a transition from one backyard to the next. It would have up to three homes backing up to one home at the 6,000-foot lots. And so I'm wondering i- if this is a loss leader of presentation to get our attention at how extreme you can go and then come back with something that seems more reasonable to the community. That's not a fair question to ask, but that's what I've been thinking.
All right, thanks, Jared. Other questions? Any commissioners?
This is Commissioner Doxy. Again, I, I, I hear what Commissioner Doxy's saying and, well, that could be. And if that's the case, then, you know, what would you do? I guess the, the question that I have to the developer is, again, trying to address what Commissioner Doxy said about, you know, extreme, you know, backyard. Do you have? Are you willing to change the density of those lots that are bordering the current homes?
Am I on? Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're open to exploring some type of buffer if, if necessary to try to transition that better up against the existing homes to the north and to the west. But by and large, this density i- is ultimately what we envision. And, and to answer Mr. Doxy's question, in all sincerity, this is what we're proposing and this is what we have built in other locations in Lehigh and Park City. And it's, it's done really well. It's dressed up nice. It's full masonry. It looks good. And this is what we envisioned for the property. So no, we're not, we're not trying to, you know, throw this out as a, as a loss leader or just as a, you know, red herring. We're, we're really wanting to, to build this. And, you know, we're happy to work with the neighbors on some adjustments if, if there's needed adjustments with regards to a transition or a buffer.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to ask again, buffer doesn't seem like something the neighbors would want. Looking at the comments and even Commissioner Doxy as a, lives in that area. So again, I'll ask you, I'm not talking about a buffer, but I'm talking about the density. Would you be willing to change that? On those properties that back up against existing homes?
Yeah, we, we'd prefer a vote on this as is, but certainly we're open to feedback that you as a commission have for us. Anything that can help us be successful and, and you as the planning commission representing the city to be successful. We, we'd like for a win-win, so we're open to different feedback, but at the same time, we, you know, the application before you, we'd, we'd request a vote on for a recommendation to the city council.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Scott.
Is, in your experience, is 56 lots enough to maintain a 42-foot private right-of-way in all of these open spaces in perpetuity? I'm, I'm concerned with, you know, it's, it's a definitely a departure of the density from the area, but on, on its face, it's really 56 homeowners that would be responsible for plowing, maintenance, street overlay, any number of other, you know, private utility improvements happening in that in perpetuity. And I'm, I'm concerned about the length of the private right-of-way, especially that it circles around and, and what that does to the city in five, 10, 15 years when those property owners come back and say that they don't have the money to overlay that degrading asphalt street and try to turn it back to the city. And so just wondering your experience on the length of time and, and the limited number of houses and whether or not these are actually viable over the long run.
Yeah, that's a great question. We're actually doing a project right now in Bountiful that's 34 units. And it's all private, all private roads, and that's an even lower number than this. And in our experience, you know, that's not too low of a number to have an HOA. We have really small HOAs all over the place in several projects we've done, but this is certainly not a number that would prevent an HOA from maintaining snow removal, roads, open space maintenance, et cetera. In, in my experience.
In our, Commissioner Doxy, again, in our current subdivision, we've got an overlay of us in Brattle Walk with lot sizes a little bit bigger than the density proposed here. But they've got a separate HOA agreement on top of the overall subdivision agreement. Those folks are paying, I think it's 150 to 200 a month, while the rest of the subdivision is paying $60 a month, which includes two pools and two and a half miles of trails and outdoor tennis and basketball courts. It's only 60 a month, so it's going to be a high HOA fee for a small subdivision like this.
Absolutely. And, you know, this, this is by no means affordable housing. This is for buyers who can't afford or, or don't want to maintain a half-acre lot. And, and, you know, there's a price to be paid for maintenance of open space and snow removal. And I can't quote as to the exact amount of what the HOA amount would be, but, you know, there would be a substantial HOA cost to cover the maintenance.
Correct. Other questions?
I have one question for the applicant. If I'm looking at your concept plan, there's two parcels that I'm curious about, you know, the one that's, that's a rectangular shape to the north and then the, the one that I'll call a mirrored elongated shape of Utah to the south. Have you had conversations with those owners? And if so, what, what have those conversations been like to, to bring those into a, a plan?
Yeah, we've had extensive conversations with the homeowner to the north, or the property owner to the north, rather, Charlotte Anderson. We've not been able to come to terms on an agreement, but we have had conversations with her. I vaguely remember some conversations with property owners to the south, but it's been some time and we've, we've, we've actually had conversations with Sunset Equestrian as well about access and connection, connectivity. But that's, that's a long time ago. So really, the only recent party is, is Mrs. Anderson to the north and she was not willing to sell.
That's my questions for now.
Okay, thanks. So I just wondered a little bit about timing on the proposal, because it seems to me that you're not going to be able to build this proposal until there's some additional access in the area. And Lyle, I don't know what, if, if the city ordinance requires that access or we have some kind of a requirement for adequate access before a, a development proposal can move ahead. But if, if the streets that are going to provide the access in the future are still a little bit of a ways away and before that really would make it, I think, feasible to build it, why are we looking at considering the rezoning at this point?
Sorry, is that a question for me, the applicant?
Yeah, just curious.
Well, we realize this is a long-term play. This is not an overnight project and, and we know that, we were told that 2021 would be the start of the Angel Street frontage road extension. And so we thought we'd focus on getting the entitlements, the rezone done now and, and look to the future now while we're under contract on the property and while we control the property. And, and then look to, you know, actually building the subdivision when the infrastructure is installed. We, we just know this is not going to be, this is not your standard subdivision that you rezoned today and build tomorrow. This is going to take time and we, we acknowledge that. And so we're, we're trying to be careful in our planning and plan for the future and with the expectation that the Angel Street, you know, is, is coming in the next year or so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
What, I mean, if, this is a request and I just double-checked it, but it's a request for just the R1-6 and it's a private subdivision. So is, is this going to require a future request for a PRUD or another overlay? And is there a, a reason why it's not just like the full, you know, the full rezone to entitle request? Rather this kind of stepped process to, to get the zoning in place and then come back for a PRUD?
I can do some of that as well.
You can answer that question.
Okay, so part of that was on encouragement from staff based on our timing and their ability to actually do the subdivision. Again, we're, from the staff's perspective, whether the type of development is correct or not, the timing is of concern to us. And typically a final plat's only good for so long. And if the development and everything's not in place, then some of that's kind of a moot conversation at this point. So it was my recommendation to, let's talk only about the base zoning to get an idea on, you know, maybe set an expectation of what might come at a later date when it's, I think, I think more appropriate to actually consider the details of the development once the infrastructure and other details are in place in this area.
Okay. Other questions? All right, if not, this is a public hearing. Once again, this is a rezone consideration, which where the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council and we're required to have a public hearing before we make that recommendation. And so as with the previous item, what we will do is we will ask Lyle to take a look at those who are on the Zoom meeting who may be interested in making comment on this. And Lyle will indicate to you how to indicate that you want to make a comment. Let's again, take a look, Lyle, and see how many people want to comment and see if we may need to ask for time limits on the comments to be made.
We'll give them just a few minutes. It looks like they're figuring it out. I have about seven now. Anybody who hasn't raised their hand yet, if you aren't interested, again, move your mouse around in your screen in the bottom middle. There should be an option for you to quick raise hand and we'll give you maybe 10 more seconds or so and we'll start counting to give the chair an idea of how many are interested.
So far, Mr. Chair, I've got nine, I've counted, who have raised their hand.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and move forward, have the public comment. We do ask you to keep your comments succinct, recognizing that we're already running a little bit late, but we certainly don't want to discourage you from making the comments that you do want to make with regard to this. If you hear comments that others are making that are similar to ones that you want to make, it's fine to just say, I agree with what a previous speaker said or echo that and maybe help us save a little bit of time. So with that, Lyle, let's go ahead and have you start lining people up and, and authorizing them to speak.
Hey, Russell Lassen, if I'm saying that right, Russell, you're going to be first up here. We've given you permission. Once you're muted, please address the commission.
Yeah, we heard, yeah, we hear you.
Okay. And I'll just say that first of all, I, I agree that this seems premature to rezone this property primarily for two reasons. One is that the general plan will be amended coming up in the, in the next year. And such a drastic change in, in zoning should be considered in the general plan, instead of just putting, you know, rezoning it so tightly right up against other stuff that it doesn't fit around. So giving, giving feedback for the general plan should be, should be allowed for, for what happens with all this area. I mean, this, something's, I mean, not this drastic, but with the Equestrian Center, we just went through all of that. Oh, by the way, I live on Kentucky Derby Way and the corner of Kentucky Derby Way and Mayor, just north of here. And also further developments with the road should, should be at least started, at least closer before considering the result, you know, rezoning this. I just feel like it's premature to, to rezone that property for that density until we get closer to that in case something changes with, with, with construction of those roads. Really, my main concern is just limiting, trying to limit the density of the entire area south of Sunset Equestrian to prevent excessive traffic up through Sunset Equestrian, Seabiscuit and on Kentucky Derby Way. I just, I live right on the corner right there and I can just see people cruising around that corner once that, yeah, once they're making their way up north. Anyone that lives in any of those, any of that property south of Sunset. any of that property south of Sunset Equestrian would definitely, any, heading north to anything, they would want to head up to Western using either Seabiscuit or Kentucky Derby Way. And I, I guess if, if 550 West terminated at Seabiscuit and prevented people from going up through, through there, that would alleviate some of that concern. But, you know, personally, I would love for 550 West to connect, because it cut five, 10 minutes off my commute to get down to the new freeway as well. But, but that would alleviate that, that problem of trying to feed up into Sunset Equestrian. But that's my comments, thanks.
You bet, thanks, Mr. Lassen, appreciate that. Lyle, next?
Hey, Matt House, we're giving you permission now to speak. As soon as you're unmuted, please address the commission.
There we go, Mr. House? Whoops.
Okay, okay, now I'm here, I think.
There we go.
So my concerns echo most of what's been said here already. With the current plan, the only outlet north is on to Seabiscuit, a street with 28 houses. So if we directly connect 56 houses onto this one residential street, we're potentially tripling traffic just from residential traffic, not to mention anyone that may be heading north off the new connections. That's a lot of traffic to add, not to mention that no other streets are for sure planned. I mean, this is definitely premature. If we don't have any for sure streets planned, except for this one residential street, really, the subject should be moot until all streets are planned in and out of this section, because the, the density is going to increase drastically, and it's going to put a lot of strain on the neighborhood. This area has a large number of small children that play frequently in the streets. I, it's, it's just a bad scenario all around.
Okay, thanks, Mr. House, appreciate your comments. Lyle, who's next?
Yes, we're giving Matt Hill some permission. Looks like you're unmuted, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, great, hey, thanks for your time, guys. I'll echo the sentiment just listed out, Seabiscuit, it's just not a very big road. My bigger concern isn't the development. I believe that all of this area eventually will be developed, that, all of that farmland. It's the precedent being set, right? If we allow 56 homes in here, technically, they could go up to 70 with, with what their, you know, restrictions would allow. Everybody around there is going to want the same thing. And then how do we later tell them, oh, gosh, that's, it's already created a big issue pushing 56 homes through Seabiscuit? Sorry, you guys aren't able to have the same thing. So I worry about, about that. I, I don't fault Ivory, you know, I would do the same probably if I were them. I think maybe there was a slip of tongue where he said, you know, we're coming to you with this as just a start. I would start here too, to be honest, because that, that gives you the, the biggest bang for your buck. But I worry about future precedent, and the roads just, A, aren't there, and Seabiscuit, I just don't believe can handle this type of density moving forward, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hill, appreciate it. Next?
Amy Headley?
Yeah, that's right. Thanks for accepting my commentary tonight. I have a few comments, and I know most of you may have also read my email. Primarily, I wanted to echo what Commissioner Doxy stated. This is an extreme departure from the homes in the surrounding area. I do live just north of this property on Mare Drive. So my, my home is on a 0.47 acre lot under this map as plotted. I would have three new homes bordering my yard. The density of these lots, you know, and the image that they show from the Park City development really make it look like, you know, my yard would effectively end up with these buildings right behind it without much, you know, yard space in between, which is, you know, a concern to me, just being so different from our area, but also just, you know, I have a large private lot with a private pool. You know, and it definitely affects the, the quality of living that we have in this space. The nine homes along Mare Drive and where it continues up Mare Circle do range in size from 0.45 to 0.5 acres. And the majority of homes that are proposed, this is, this is kind of interesting to me, but they're, they're asking for rezoning at 0.13 acres at the smallest, but on the plot map, 44 of the 56 lots appear to be 0.11 acres or smaller. 22 of them are 0.11 and 22 are only 0.08. So to me, you know, if this is the vision, it actually does look like they're asking for a rezone to 0.13, but then they're actually going to come in with the vision to make it even smaller and even more of a departure from the surrounding areas. And then lastly, I'm also concerned about the precedent this would set for the multifamily housing proposal. It was rejected on the Equestrian Center property earlier this year. So just kind of wanted to revive that a little bit, you know, before this becomes a slippery slope that heads in a direction that changes the entire area drastically.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Headley, we appreciate your comments. Next, Lyle?
Yes, we have Marcy Priest, that's given permission now. Marcy, you're unmuted, go ahead and address the commission.
Okay, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so yeah, I echo what everyone else said. I think one of my other concerns too, I live on Seabiscuit, and when we initially built here, just the atmosphere, bigger lots, more space. And I had emailed the planning commission when we moved in, just curious what was going to happen, you know, if there were plans down where Mare could potentially connect to Sunset, or, you know, what was going to happen at the end of our street? And of course, nothing was set, and as nothing is set right now. But, you know, Angel Street extension wasn't on the books then. And so I was told, you know, potentially, maybe that 550 could turn up and go to Sunset. And, and, you know, that makes sense as far as connecting things. But now, I think, just having all of the, this land get developed and, and, you know, of course, homes are going to be in there. My fear now is that, you know, all of these homes are going to be off 550, how this Ivory Homes, their, their road goes off, their homes are not located right on it. But as it continues up, our road, you know, our homes are right on Seabiscuit. And, and it's no longer like a collector's street, now it's a residential street. And I just fear with all of this development and a direct link to Angel Street, that as this development continues, it's just, I know there wasn't necessarily an original plan for 550, but my hope is that as these things happen, that the city can continue to change plans and potentially look at capping off Sunset and Mare. And, you know, one of you mentioned earlier that potentially maybe some of that development could go east to Sunset. But just keeping that in mind, that, that that completely changes the neighborhood and community that, that we want and that we've built. And then, yeah, same echo with rezoning, and it doesn't match the zone that we have in the whole community right there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Priest, appreciate that. Lyle, next?
So Megan Fink is next to speak. Megan, looks like she's unmuted, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, okay, yes, thank you for letting me speak today. I did want to address the, the private lane above that half cul-de-sac that's just off of Sunset. We were told it would stay a private drive because of the dangerous intersection with Burton, that it would never be developed. And that's why there's that cul-de-sac that would eventually be completed. And so it would never have gone all the way through. I believe a traffic study was done on that. And so it was, and it was said, never to be completed. There also, you know, we, we, I really agree with everyone's thing. I also live on Seabiscuit, you know, kid in the wheelchair, everything. We are so, so worried about opening up 550. We really want to cap off that area. We, we can't handle all that traffic. And, you know, I'd sent everyone emails, and we just wanted to make sure that, that is really, really thought through. And, and the homes that they're presenting, they're just, it, it's just not ready. Things need to change in it. I think if we could send it back, have them do some work, get some bigger lots on the north and the, and the ones that are closer to our subdivision, maybe put the smaller homes in just that little patch that's just covered by the rest of their homes, maybe that would be a better idea. It's, it just isn't ready yet. And, and with Angel not being done, it's definitely nowhere near being, should be ready. So, other than that, yeah, I've been agreeing with everyone's comments as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next slide.
Hey, Rose Coleman is next to speak. She's given permission, and as long as you're unmuted, Rose, which looks like you have, you're welcome to address the commission.
Great, thank you for your time, I appreciate that. Thank you, Jared, for your thoughts. Definitely, this area is what draws to us, this area with the openness, the feel, the feeling of the rural, but being close to amenities. The comment back to Ivory Homes, I recognize that you have had good, good things happen in Park City and other areas with the development that you're proposing. However, we are not those areas, and nor do I believe that families moved here to have a development such as that put into their backyard. I live on Mare, and so, like has been mentioned by another person here, we would be on the backside of the development. Some other concerns, voice, are totally agreeing with what all has been said. There's also the concern on the other side of infrastructure, and that is a low-lying area. So there is water that stands down there. We have a lower end in our backyard, so just want to make sure with the storm drain that that would all be taken care of. I'm sure that that's been thought about. But then also the sewage system, we are, because we are in a lower-lying area, we are on the pump system. And adding 56 additional homes, is that going to tax the, the sewage system that we have right now? I recognize that they are possibly having some changes. But speaking with Jill, there, there was a concern about that with that many homes thought about to, to be adding into the, that system. Emergency vehicles, access codes, fires, it looks like that development is like a bottleneck when one access going into 56 homes and roundabouting. And that is not, I would suggest, not a safe scenario in an emergency situation. Evacuation is only a one-way right now, other than what has been looked at going up on those other private roads or the other road that is not a safe access onto Sunset at all. So again, thank you for your time. I, I don't feel that this 56 proposal is what is, what Kaysville is needing or wanting at this time here. We did not purchase here to have such a high density within our backyard. We like the openness, and that's what's, what drew us here. If we wanted the, or the closeness and the close vicinity of homes, maybe we would have looked at Park City, but we did not. So this is what drew us here, so just some thoughts to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lyle, how many more do we have?
So we've had a few more raise hands since we started. I've got five total hands left currently. All right, this board is currently next. Let me know if you feel we need to change any of our format, Mr. Chair, but otherwise.
Yeah, no, I think we're fine, as long as folks just recognize, we just ask you to keep your comments succinct, so we can move the meeting along. So, thank you, so Ms. Ford?
Hey, am I off mute?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. So I live in the half cul-de-sac on the, quote, "private lane" on the wrong side of the barriers. And just to echo the other sentiments, we were also informed that the, I mean, it's, it's a glorified dirt road, would never be developed because it is too close to Burton Lane. And the reason we picked our lot in Sunset was because we did anticipate someday being closed off in a nice cul-de-sac where our kids could play outside safely without a lot of traffic. Currently, we do have a lot of traffic that flies up and down that dirt road to go around the corner. There, there is a business down there, and some of it is business traffic. And some of it is folks that use that really private secluded area for some activities they don't want other people to know about. So I, my fear is that if you do open that up, I think Seabiscuit will see quite a bit of traffic. And like they've said before, there are always little children out there playing. I know the Finks that are out there with their cutie in his wheelchair. But I also think that people are going to keep flying around the corner up and down that dirt road. And the, the dirt road really is not wide enough for two cars. I mean, we can kind of sneak by each other, but there's a huge safety concern there for us, as well as the high density that's been mentioned. I think they said there's only going to be five feet of separation between each home. And that feels very crowded. That's like the previous speaker said, that's exactly what we were trying to avoid. And I also agree with the safety concern with the single road access that goes down and makes a loop. Getting emergency vehicles in there, getting those roads plowed, where does all that snow go? I mean, there's, there's no outlet, there's no place to, to really push it out of the way. I had one more thought, and I can't remember. Oh, and that, the, the single entrance road there is very, very long, and there's what, 30, 40 houses along that? The Sunset Equestrian neighborhood is set up with a single access road, Western Drive, but there aren't any actual homes on it. And it's very, very wide, which allows for a pretty free flow of traffic. And I worry with the way they've got it built, where homes are right on that thoroughfare, and there's so many of them. I think you're going to have a lot of potential for auto pedestrian accidents.
Okay. Appreciate your comments, thank you, Ms. Ford. Lyle, next?
Yeah, Jason Gagne, you're next. As soon as you're unmuted, go ahead and address the commission.
Thank you, appreciate you pronouncing my name correctly, that's amazing. You're like one of three Americans that can do that, that. But I'm on, I'm on Mare Circle, and this is my backyard, where these homes would go. And the whole reason we bought this home was because of the view and to be, be close to town. My wife's a physician, has to be close to the, the Leighton Hospital and, but yet be far enough away that we, we can have a little bit of space and separation from, from folks. So my concern is, I echo what everybody else is saying about, it, it seems a strong departure from what's, what's around here, as well as the concerns of the utilities. But we also then would have the pressures on the school systems, which are already overcrowded. And whether they go to, you know, Charter School, or they go to Snow Horse, or wherever they might go, that, that traffic around there is just going to be significantly more complicated, which is already a typical bottleneck as it is now. And then the impact of the home values that are, that are already here because of the loss of those views and that, that open space. So there, there's some economic concern there as well. And, and just for clarification, it's, the, the properties are under contract, they haven't been acquired. Did I understand that correctly when they, when they stated that?
I, I assume so, but Lyle, can you answer that, or Chase, one of the two of you?
Yeah, Chase may be more appropriate, but my understanding is the Anderson family owns the Ivory Homes, the applicant is under contract with the property. And so it's a mission to pursue this process from them.
Yeah, I, I figure as much, it'd be under contract pending, pending outcomes. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to purchase it if things didn't go forward. So, now that, I appreciate the clarification, but I, again, just echo what everybody else is saying, that it's, we're not Park City. And if we'd wanted to live in Park City in the situations, we probably would have picked that instead of being here, but we picked here for a reason. So we could have, have the larger lots and, and the space and the views, and, and have a safer place for our kids to be and not have that, that extra volume of, of population and traffic. So thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Okay, next we have Tyler Briggs. Go ahead, Tyler, as soon as you're unmuted, go.
Yeah, hey, thanks, everybody. I'll be super brief. I, I sent an email out to the planning commission already with some of my concerns over traffic and safety of our kids here on Seabiscuit. One other thing I'll just point out as well, during school, school times in the morning, the traffic on Western and Angel gets really congested. It's already an issue and, you know, concerned about the additional density that this division would cause as well. So really appreciate you listening to us, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now, but completely agree with all the words that have been said today. So thank you, guys.
Appreciate that, thanks, Mr. Briggs, all right. Lyle, next?
And next we have Jen Johns. Go ahead, Jen, as soon as you're unmuted, and address the commission. And next we have Jen Johns. Uh, go ahead Jen, as soon as you're unmuted and address the commission.
Not hearing. Uh, let's move to someone else and maybe come back to, um, Ms. Johns.
Okay. Yeah, John Crossman, uh, go ahead in general. We'll give you a try here in a minute. Uh, John, as soon as you're able to unmute yourself, you're welcome to address the commission.
Fantastic. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, um, echoing a lot of what's been said here, just want to make sure that, um, it, it's clear. I live on Seabiscuit as well. Um, you know, over the last few months, there hasn't been a lot of, uh, traffic around Jefferson and Dever, Snow Horse and Centennial because we haven't had school. When school is in, traffic on Western and, uh, Sunset is, um, it's really, really busy. Adding another fifty-six, seventy, whatever homes to this, um, th- this community, this road, where we live, i- it's just, it's just a huge change. If you consider these, you know, four schools that are within a mile, two miles of us as well and, 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 uh, density of the homes. Uh, I think all of us in this community that have spoken, we all kind of agree, um, hey, building out, that's great. Building out something consistent with the neighborhood is certainly something that, that we want to be considered. And also, um, you know, ju- just the concern with why we built here and, and, and the neighborhood we're sort of opposed to. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we try Jen Johns again? Is Jen Johns there? Nope, still not hearing anything. Okay, Lyle, let's go to whoever's next.
Well, we had one more, Mr. Chair, and it was, uh, Kim Nuttall. I show your name on here. Um, you had your hand raised and we think on our end, we accidentally lowered your hand. If you're still interested in speaking, you can raise that hand and we'll give you permission. Oh, yeah. Okay. Now, go ahead, Kim, and, uh, address the commission at this time.
Okay, thanks so much. I actually kind of took my hand down because everything had been said. I live on the north end of Seabiscuit, right, um, at the top, and there's a bend in the road and it's a very thin road. The other day I saw seventeen little kids out riding bikes, playing basketball, soccer. One of the balls rolled into the road and I just was watching that, knowing that Ivory was asking for this zoning. And it just kind of made me sick to my stomach, thinking the repercussions that could come to our one street if there was more traffic on it. So I just wanted to mention that just as far as safety goes. And that I just also agree that I'm fine with the area being built out and stuff, but I just think the zoning needs to be more like our homes that we have here now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Lyle, anyone else?
Well, that, that's everybody, um, that we've had a hand up. I do have one more that I believe is previously spoken, Ms. Rose Coleman. And if we wish to hear from her again, that is the final remaining hand.
Okay, we'll take that as the final comment then. So, Ms. Coleman, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of the younger generation coming out that, um, would like to add a few of their thoughts, um, on this development as well.
Um, one of my concerns would be the traffic that would become a part of those roads that go by the Charter School as well as Snow Horse and Centennial. Uh, I've biked in the mornings as well to get to the junior high. And going across Western Drive can be, is it Western? Going across Western Drive can be kind of sketchy as of now. So I think with more people driving their students to those schools will be, will make it a little bit more hazardous and dangerous for students to cross. So that's just one of my concerns about having more, more homes and more families coming into these schools.
Um, I also have a concern because I bike to Endeavor and going across the Sunset and people stop me there, but I'm concerned that with this new incoming road, people are, I don't think are going to be too worried about me and, and won't let me cross. So I'm, I'm, eh, I'm pretty concerned about it because I don't want to get hit by a car.
All right. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Thanks very much for, uh, participating.
Well, Rose, while you're there, if I might have you unmute, do you mind giving us the name of your child as well, just for our record?
Yeah, um, my daughter, Tamesha Coleman, and my son Colt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lyle, anyone else?
Well, we have Jen Johns who's been trying to, she's raised.
Oh, yeah.
Perhaps it's working this time.
Let's try one more time. Jen?
Let's see. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we've got you.
Oh, sorry, like kicked me out of the whole Zoom when I was trying to connect to my microphone before. So I missed a few people, but I just live on the north end of Seabiscuit and I'm not sure if you know this or not, but it's not a straight north-south street. It takes a pretty big turn on the north side, right in front of my neighborhood. And it's tricky for me sometimes just to get out of my driveway as it is. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like with all the construction vehicles and added people coming to and from their homes and visitors coming to and from their homes. And there are more than seventy kids on Seabiscuit alone and a ton in this neighborhood. And there are near misses every day with children being hit or children hitting children on motorized vehicles. And so I'm really concerned about that. And I'm also concerned, I'm not sure if they mentioned it, but, um, Snow Horse Elementary, the Charter School and Centennial Junior High all begin and end within the same hour every day. And it's nearly impossible to get out of this neighborhood on, um, Western Drive and get onto Sunset and head north as it is. It's just a two-way stop and there's so much traffic. And I know my son walks home from Centennial Junior High right in, right by Jared Doxy's house. And it's hard for him just to cross Western Drive because he comes from a path onto Western Drive to get onto the other path. And I just, I'm worried about the safety of our children and I would hate for somebody to get hit because then we're going to have to reevaluate this whole plan.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Glad we got you on. Thank you. Okay, Lyle, anyone else?
The final hand, uh, Justin Humphries raises his hand. Uh, so I've got one.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I liked what, uh, Commissioner Doxy said about the consistency of the, the zoning with, with what the neighborhood is. I actually live on the very corner of Seabiscuit. Um, and there's quite a lot of traffic, um, coming on to, um, on to Kentucky Derby. So, um, yeah, the concern about traffic and, and really just keeping that consistent look and feel with the neighborhood. Um, it feels, um, as was said, too early. It seems the, the Angel Street plan is not quite in place. Um, that could change, um, the, the access road from the end of Mayor Drive is not an option. So it seems like a little bit more time for this to bake in the oven before, before it goes for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, wow, is that, uh, can I wrap this up?
It's like the more we go, the more hands keep popping up. So, if you have one more, uh, if you're open to an additional comment.
Yes, certainly.
No, Ashley Yates is the next, uh, one to speak. As soon as you're unmuted, go ahead and address the commission.
This is actually, uh, her husband. Is that Mr., Mr. Summer Corn, the father of Scott and Peter Summer Corn?
It is.
I'm Brigham Yates. So I played soccer with your boys growing up and stuff, but.
Absolutely, yeah.
Took me a second to recognize you, but anyway, so we just, we, we came from Fruit Heights. Um, we were in an Ivory development for about five years and, you know, the first thing I hear is Ivory, you know, community coming in, exactly the type of community that we just came from. You know, we purposely, you know, just purchased this home about six months ago, I want to say, um, to get away from what they had developed up in Fruit Heights off of Nichols Road, you know, the high traffic and the roads and the street. And the street that we were on was very, you know, it, it wasn't very safe for kids. So, I mean, you know, when we found this house about six months ago, that was the biggest selling point for us was, you know, our little kids being able to be out on the street and biking. So I hear, you know, more homes coming in and, you know, potentially, you know, more traffic coming down this road. We obviously haven't been here that long, but that was, we just heard Kaysville was great coming from Fruit Heights and we hope it stays that way.
Okay. Thanks very much. We appreciate your comment and good to hear from you again, Brigham.
That's the end of that, Mr. Chair, so I think you'd be okay if you wished to end the public comment. I see no further interest from those attending.
Okay, great. With that, we'll end the public comment. Thank you all for the comments that you've, uh, given us. We will chase, uh, turn now to Chase Freebaron again for any comments that he may have in response.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Um, a lot of good notes, uh, I took from a lot of good comments. Appreciate everybody making, uh, those comments and, uh, certainly some of the best ideas we get come from neighbors. So, uh, thank you. Um, to, to answer a lot of, I, I kind of sum up a lot of these, um, concerns. One into traffic, which we would do a traffic study and look at the traffic outcomes. You know, I think most of the traffic would, would go out onto Angel Street and, and go south. Uh, that's a quicker connection, I think, than going all through, uh, Sunset Equestrian. But it's not to say that that's not possible or that's not a, a possible outcome. And then, you know, I think consistency with zoning, you know, if there's something different, uh, the, the commissioners have in mind as far as zoning goes, we're, we're all ears. Um, and then schools, you know, that's something we don't really have any control over, but certainly that's an, an impact and we understand that. But we appreciate everyone's comments and, um, happy to answer any other questions you might have as a commission.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Freebaron. Appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, with that, let's, um, let's turn this back in amongst ourselves and, uh, discuss this and see where we want to go with this proposal. Uh, what comments or questions do you have?
Uh, Commissioner Doxy again. I appreciate, uh, the comments of all the neighbors. In this area, we've got a lot of beautiful farmland that will get developed. The question is, how will it get developed? And the comments I made before about the density, I, I'm one that believes that we need more affordable housing in Kaysville. That's why I, uh, uh, applied to, to get onto the planning commission to promote more affordable housing. I do believe that. However, this is too drastic of a, of a situation to go from half bigger lots to, to a six thousand square foot lots. It's just too drastic. We need to come up with a better solution and have more of a transition away from the Sunset Equestrian Estates, which is a, a prominent neighborhood in Kaysville with prominent people that live here. And, uh, so I think Ivory Homes is a class act developer. Ellis Ivory and Clark Ivory are wonderful people to do a lot of good things for this state and our community. And so I have nothing but respect for Ivory. I'm just pleading that we can come up with some kind of a transition that's more reasonable from where four hundred homes currently sit on, uh, half bigger lots to what they proposed.
Thanks, Jared. Other comments?
This is Commissioner Barris. Um, I would say, you know, I, I kind of echo what Commissioner Doxy just said that, you know, it looks from the renderings that what Ivory is offering is high quality. You know, it would be something that would be added to the community. I think I, I'm just listening to the, the, um, the people in the community and I, I kind of have the same concerns as they do that, I mean, I, in principle, I, I probably would agree with the, the development as is, just because I, I am for, um, you know, affordable housing. And I think that, you know, the smaller lots are going to help us to get closer to that. Um, but I think that to be able to have that, be, or be, be for that, um, that this proposal, the roads would need to be in place. Um, because that would just be the worst case scenario to like approve this rezone. And then for some reason, the, the roads didn't come in the way that were proposed. Um, because, you know, I can see how that could be a huge problem with the traffic. So, I, to me, I, I think that, um, it seems a little premature. I, I would rather the roads be in place before we consider a rezone at, at this level of high-density housing.
Okay. Um, yeah, maybe just, you know, in response or, uh, echoing what both Jared and Toby have talked about. I, uh, I really do agree about the affordable housing. Um, density doesn't necessarily equate as affordable. And I think this reflects that to some extent because while they're, uh, they are talking probably smaller homes and smaller lots, certainly. Uh, while it brings the price down relative to that area, it may be more affordable, but I don't know that you can really call it affordable housing. And then the other aspect that Toby mentions, I, I really do wor- wonder a little bit or worry a little bit about the timing on the, on the request. Um, it, I, I understand that the plans, uh, are there for the roads, but I really think that the, the access and, um, uh, how that all, uh, comes about is really going to be key to how this area can and should develop, uh, in the future. So, kind of just a couple of comments I have. Other comments?
Um, I'll just make a few comments. Um, I'll, I'll lead with a devil's advocate comment. Uh, and that is, I mean, if my, if my math or if my count was correct, and I, I, I confess I did it quickly, so I might be off a little bit, but the, the portion that I think, uh, Commissioner Doxy mentioned that portion of housing that is, uh, a higher density, I'm not going to call it high density because it's still single-family homes, but it's right in the middle of Sunset Equestrian Estates, right off of Western Drive, that has the separate HOA that Commissioner Doxy mentioned. I think there's fifty-six units there, um, which is what we're looking at here. Uh, I think the densities of what Ivory is proposing here are very similar to what is proposed there or what is built there. And if I were to guess, you know, the, the residents of, of Sunset Equestrian might see, or they, it sounds like they do see traffic and I, and I don't doubt that there is traffic, especially certain times of the day when school is in session, but it's not like you can pinpoint it to that one specific, uh, portion of, of Sunset Equestrian Estates that is a little higher density. So in that respect, you know, it's possible that once all the infrastructure comes in and this Ivory proposal was built, it would feel similar to that that's already there and, and, uh, wouldn't necessarily bring, uh, a lot of noticeably detrimental impacts that can be pinpointed to this one, one development. Now, having said that, my ultimate opinion is, um, that, uh, this is, this is premature. Um, I think especially because, uh, the general plan is getting amended. With Angel Street being still uncertain, with West Davis Quarter not coming in, though we, we know where West Davis Quarter, the alignment is going. There's a lot of unanswered questions that I would like to wait and see what the public process, uh, and, and what the commission does with respect to the general plan and what we think should go down here. And it's, it's premature for us to sit here and, uh, with somewhat of a narrow view and, and look at this and say yes or no, when a general plan amendment process takes a much broader view. And I think we would be much better served for this, not only this neighborhood, but as a community as a whole, to wait and see what we think the general plan amendment says should go here before we make decisions specifically about what goes here. So, um, I would recommend denial at this stage.
Thanks, Josh. Uh, other comments?
I guess I'd like to do a follow-up question to, uh, Mr. Freebaron. Uh, and I guess this goes to all the comments that, uh, have been said, whether it's by the commission or the, uh, public, uh, why now? Why not wait?
Uh, Mr. Freebaron, you care to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Quan. Um, yeah, I mean, we have the property in front of us now. We're under contract on it now and, and the application is now. And I understand that there's some unanswered questions about, uh, transportation facilities and, and whatnot. But, um, you know, we know that there's a lot of puzzle pieces that have to come into play before we can, before we can move ahead. But we feel that, uh, now is a good time to work through the land use question, uh, and then work to, uh, actual subdivision design and plat approval later, once those roads have been connected.
And, uh, I'm sorry, you just mentioned that you're under contract, so a denial. And I'm sorry, you just mentioned that you're under contract, so a denial, what would that mean to the, to the deal?
Well, it, it's a long-term contract, but I mean, I don't want to speak to the specifics of the contract. But we're, we're open to waiting to see, you know, what happens with West Davis Corridor and Angel Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Yeah, let me just make a follow-up on, on the comment from the applicant in light of my thoughts earlier. You know, I, I can respect what he's saying, but my point is that the general plan amendment process takes our community as a whole and says, what do we want? The foreseeable future, the next five or 10, or, or even longer years to look like? And where do we want growth to happen in, in the areas that are left? And what do we want that to look like? Just generally speaking, I mean, there's a reason why it's called the general plan. We look very generally, we look at the whole picture. And perhaps in that process, we might, as a commission or as a community, which hopefully we get a lot of input from the community. So, all those neighbors who are listening, please let your voice be heard on the general plan amendment process. Perhaps after that process, we decide that R16 or something similar is appropriate or desired in this area. Maybe that's how we will come down. On the other hand, maybe we will come down on the other side and say that this, this shouldn't go lower than R120 or, or whatever. You know, you don't get that specific in a general plan, but you kind of pinpoint general areas. And I think, I'm not, don't, nobody quote me on this, but I think we might end up with a general plan map, which we haven't had. We might end up with a general plan map out of this amendment, which might also help Ivory or other property owners in this area or other portions of Kaysville. So, I think, I, I recognize that, 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 that this is proposed to us now and Ivory would like to move forward now or get an idea now. But we need to look broader first for this portion. Now, there are other properties, other proposals, other rezone requests that we've heard recently or that we may hear in the future, where we take them on their own merits and they might be ready for a decision. This one is not ready for a decision, in my opinion. We need to wait for a, a broader planning process to work its way through that has already started, so.
Thanks, Josh. Other discussion? If not, is anyone ready to try a motion?
I would like to, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Jared.
I would like to make a motion to deny the request of Ivory Homes to rezon the 10 acres approximately 1700 South and 5500 West from the RA and the R5 to the R16.
Just a correction or a slight correction there. It would be a recommendation to deny to the council.
Recommendation to deny, thank you.
And then, would you, do you have, is there a rationale? Would you be willing to, to make some kind of a statement as to the reason for the, the recommendation for denial?
The reason for that is, let's let the general plan land first.
So, you're saying the, the timing?
Of all the farmland in Kaysville, how it's going to get developed generally.
So, the timing, letting the, the current, currently underway general plan update go through its process first?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Josh has seconded the motion. All right, you've all heard the motion. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Yeah, so what's the, is there any ramifications denying versus tabling it?
I, Lyle, do we have a time limit on when someone can reapply?
So, the planning commission's recommendation for denial doesn't necessarily preclude them from coming back at any point. If they pursue, and the council agrees with you, assuming this motion passes, and the council denies it, then they can't ask for the same thing for a period of one year.
Okay.
And if the applicant can determine based on your recommendation, they may choose to withdraw your application and come back, you know, at any time where it's not technically denied. They can pursue it to the council and see what their decision is. The council can decide differently, even from your recommendation, to potentially approve it. And then the other piece of it, tabling it gets a little tricky. If we're tabling it for, you know, a few weeks, that's one thing. But if we're talking six months or years, you know, that.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be not to table it in that scenario. It's, we're essentially starting over from scratch with notice and stuff to the public if it's been more than a few weeks on process.
Well, and I think, given the rationale for the motion, I wouldn't recommend tabling it for that reason, certainly. I, I think the denial is more appropriate.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I guess, follow-up question to Mr. Freebaron. Considering where this vote is going, would you recommend polling his application?
At, at this point, we, we just ask for your vote right now and that, that would be fine.
Okay, other discussion? All right, then, if, let's go ahead and take a vote. Scott, we'll start with you.
Hi.
Scott votes aye. Toby?
Aye.
Toby votes aye. Kwan?
Aye.
Kwan votes aye. Josh?
Aye.
Josh votes aye. Jared?
Aye.
Jared votes aye. I will vote aye. And Steve?
I will aye.
And Steve votes aye. So, we have a unanimous vote, which is a recommendation to the council for denial of this application for the right reason that we would, we think that the, the update to the general plan should occur first. There's a timing issue here with this. And as we talked about, as the discussion went forward, we, we have the issues with the infrastructure, primarily the transportation, before really this can move forward, so. All right, Mr. Freebaron, that's, you know, your decision whether to take this on and get a decision from the council as well. And then I'll let you work with staff on how you want to move forward on this. Thanks very much. All right, and thank you all, those who participated in this. We appreciate your, your participation here. And if you, if you stay in touch with the city, with the staff, they'll let you know whether this is going to be scheduled and move forward with the council. All right. Everybody refreshed and ready to go? They have another public hearing, consideration of a rezon of two acres of property at 711 East Crestwood Road from the R18, single-family residential, to the A1 Light Agricultural Zoning District. This is a rare request to go in the opposite direction. So, with that, we'll turn, oh, I'm sorry, I should, I mentioned that the applicant is Reston Justin. And with that, we'll turn to the staff for their report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief and Mr. Justin's available to describe more of his hopes for the property. But just to orient you, on the corner of 700 East and Crestwood Road, Mr. Justin has stated here roughly two acres of property. And it's currently in the R18. It's a single-family zoning district. Typically, that's a quarter acre roughly, or 8,000 square foot lot minimum. And so he well exceeds that, kind of the layout of it. You can see it's very open. It's something that's been used more for agricultural type use historically. And he hopes kind of to shore that up and primarily focus in on his rights to do things with animals and agricultural use moving forward. And so with that, he's requested the rezon to the A1 district. We've dealt with the process many times tonight, so we're simply looking for a recommendation from you to forward along to the council. And I'll let Mr. Justin perhaps speak further to his use of the property and again, be available to answer any questions. Perhaps in short, some of the differences between the A1 and R18. There are still some animal right and farm animal provisions within the R1s, but much of that goes through conditional use, where they're coming to the commission to ask for those things. And some limitations on fruit stand or something, if you were to grow fruit from the property, for example, and wanted to sell it on the street, something of that effect. The A1 zone allows, again, more agricultural-like uses that would not be permitted within the R18. So, subtle differences, but otherwise fairly similar. That maintains a larger one-acre minimum in the zoning. And with that, I'll conclude my comments.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions of the commission, by the commission of the staff? Okay, hearing none. Let's turn to Mr. Justin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, great. First, let me thank the commission for being up late and hearing our line item here. I know it's, it's been a long meeting so far, but I really appreciate you hearing us. We are just entering our third summer on this property and we got it here, you know, to have to find this, this property in East Kaysville was sort of a, a miracle for us. We're, we're pretty, self-reliance and being able to produce our own food has always been really important to us and to have this land, to be able to, to steward this land into, into production has been really fun for us so far. The current zoning we're in, R18, proposes a few limitations on us. For example, different categories of animals. Certainly, we have our conditional use permit for our chickens. We have, we have a fairly large laying hen flock already. And we've raised several other fowl animal, animals from the same, the same, you know, the category of fowl rabbits and similar animals, turkeys and things like that. The few limitations that we're really interested in rezoning for, to kind of match our intended use of the property. Things like being able to have, excuse me, a, a rooster for our flock, which is, which helps to protect them from the birds of prey. We are constantly fighting and raccoons and things. Having that, that daddy energy of the rooster is really helpful. Also, we overproduce and we're very interested in sharing with our neighbors. So, the ability to have maybe a small farm stand there to share, you know, what we're able to produce here on the property. And we've got some, some fun plans to, to add, an orchard and a few other, a few other things. So, we're really just, we're looking into the foreseeable future. We have no interest in subdividing or further developing this pro, this property. What we're really looking for is to, is to develop it further into a good, a good sustainable farm, farm property that, that can contribute to the neighborhood and to the community.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Justin. Appreciate that. Questions by the commissioners of Mr. Justin?
Any concerns that you're aware of from neighbors, specifically the, the few that are on 700 East to the West?
You know, we are good friends with all those neighbors and they haven't expressed anything but positivity. Most of them would, are quite happy to buy our eggs so far. And so we, no, no, we haven't had any, any adverse complaints or anything. And obviously, we're, we're very fastidious about following the rules on the, you know, the minimum lot size for how many animals we have dictated in, I think, 1724-1 of the, of the city code. So, we, we, we work really hard to be, to be, not be a burden or a bother to our neighbors and try to add to the community rather than causing any trouble.
Mr. Justin, I'm assuming, I guess, following up on last year's question, have you actually talked to your neighbors about, about this?
Yeah, several have stopped by. We're, we're obviously outside cultivating quite a bit in the season. Several of our neighbors have stopped by, asked about the yellow sign and, and given us a, given us a fist pump and a go-ahead. And, and they generally have, have liked the idea. I have spoken to several, at least. I'm looking at now, if you look down 7th East, there's one, two, three, four properties that are immediately adjacent to mine. And I have spoken to three of those actively, specifically about the, the rezon. And then the one that actually abuts my property on the far north side. I've been in touch with her and, and had no, no downside at all.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I guess this isn't.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
I'm not a, not a question as much as a, a comment on the keeping of, of a rooster. Typically, the, the chicken ordinances often get hung up on roosters in residential areas. And I, I know that no other, other cities that I've been in, we've dealt with that issue. And this is, this isn't really the case of like residential moving to agriculture, where that agricultural use was existing and, and running. It's rather the reverse of that, where you would be bringing that, that, in that particular potential nuisance, I guess, to the residential area. So, I'd be interested if any of the, you know, neighbors have weighed in on having a rooster, you know, specifically. And that's, that's one, I guess, one concern I have. And there is a lot of A1 around, you know, near you, so.
Yeah, and if I could, if I could just correct you on one, actually, this has been a, a agricultural property for a very long time. Before, the owners before us ran a peony farm. And previous to our, the, previous to us, the owners were actually, the house was vacant and they were letting some neighbors graze their horses in the pasture, in our back pasture. So, this has been inactive agricultural use, however, pretty low, pretty low-impact agricultural use. And not, and we're not looking to really raise that by any significant margin. And, and you're right, no, I have not, or excuse me, I've spoken to two neighbors specifically about roosters. The only expression was, that's a good idea, because we have our laying hens there. And, and we have, we have enough space and where we keep our chickens is at the furthest point from any other homes around us. It's kind of right in the center of our property where, where we keep our chickens. And, and I, I really don't anticipate there being a problem, but we would be all ears if there, if the problem was presented at any point.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, this is a public hearing.
Follow-up question.
Sure, go ahead.
That 179-3, you know, talks about what's allowed there. I think accessory buildings, do you plan on adding any accessory buildings or anything else to, to your property to assist you?
Yeah, you know, there was, there's currently a foundation for a, it looked like a shed or a barn that was previously here. And we are, we are likely going to, it's, it's, it's about 20 feet by 22 feet. And, and you've got to look really close on the aerial image to be able to see the, the foundation still sitting there. It's right smack in the center, center of the property. So, other than a chicken coop, a small barn just to house some equipment, no, no, not, not for horse stalls or, you know, you know, animal stalls. A small equipment shed is basically all it'd be, a 20 by 22 equipment shed is the only thing we really have planned other than the chicken coops at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And others? Okay, this is a public hearing or a rezon request, as we've done with the others. So, with that, we will open the public hearing and see if there are those here who would like to make a comment on this. Lyle, do we show anyone?
So, we do have half one attendance still. It looks like some are starting to raise their hands. So, again, if you haven't used them before, look at the bottom of your screen in the middle. I think there's a green button where you can select, raise your hand. We'll give you moments to do so. Currently, I have just one hand, Mr. Chair. I'll wait to see if anybody else joins in for just a moment.
All right.
Yeah, it appears we just have the one interested in making comment, Heather Eaton. Heather, just a second. Make sure you're unmuted and it's your turn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, so with the Justin's, I've lived in Liston Circle for 17 years now. So, yes, we have been here since they have had goats there, they've had chickens. And the neighbors just east of the Justin's have cows. So, the agricultural part of it, yes, is his neighbors, we've seen that for a while. He keeps his chickens in the middle of his lot, which I think is a great location. Our concern is how will he maintain the property? So, he's struggled in the past of keeping the park strip mode. So, after he put in the fence, the one that, there's been a big discussion of the fence since the accident a couple of weeks ago. And after that happened, there is a big chunk of cement in a metal pole that was just left on the corner for a year. So, we just want to make sure that the property will be maintained. And just remembering it is a residential area and want things mowed, want things kept in good condition.
Okay, thank you. Lyle, are there any others?
That is currently the only interested hand for this item, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Another interest. Another interest.
All right, if there are no others, then we will end the public hearing portion of this item for discussion. And we'll turn back to Mr. Justin if he has any, any closing comments.
No, I have no closing comments. I appreciate you here and everything. And I I appreciate the comments from the neighbor and we will certainly give a good, solid effort to do a better job out on that park strip.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, let's bring it internal here and see what discussion we have and where we're at, where we're at on this.
I just have two pretty quick comments. One is somewhat tongue in cheek, somewhat not. I think roosters get a bad rap. I think that, and I haven't always felt that way, I'm being candid, but I think they get a bad rap if only because I'm pretty sure that there's more barking dogs than roosters in Caseville. And dogs bark at all hours of the day. And dogs are generally speaking louder than roosters, I think, maybe not. But if we're going to crack down on roosters because they, because they, whatever you would call that crow, I don't know. Then then we need to start cracking down on dark barking dogs. But okay, now I won't be as much tongue in cheek. I think this is a wonderful use of this property. This is, this is, I mean, there's, you know, there's some open space in Caseville up here that's still in existence. A lot of it is subdivided and will probably be built on in in the future eventually. But, you know, it's compatible with the area, especially with the the larger farm that's to the east. And in light of situations like COVID that we're looking at right now. And if we were to come down on on a proposal like this and say, no, we don't want people utilizing their property so that they can produce and be self sufficient. If we were to come down on that, then I think we need to check our values, in my own opinion. But anyway, I'm in favor of it. And I think this is, this is a good idea up here.
Thanks, Josh. Other comments? Other discussion?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of it. Sounds good. But to Heather Eaton's comments about her concern about the ability of Mr. Justin to maintain, I don't think that's in our purview.
Right, that would be basically a city code.
Yeah.
Kind of issue, yeah. Regardless of whether the property is rezoned or not.
Right.
Yeah. Other comments? Okay, is anybody ready to try a motion?
I'll make motion that we recommend the rezone at 711 East Crestwood Road from R18 to the A1 Light Agricultural Zoning District.
Steve has made a motion to approve or to recommend approval of the rezone as proposed. Is there a second to the motion?
This is Kwan. I'll second that.
Kwan seconds that motion. Is there any further discussion to the motion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. We will start with Toby. Toby?
Aye.
Toby votes aye. Kwan?
Aye.
Kwan is an aye. Josh?
Aye.
Josh votes aye. Jared?
Aye.
Jared votes aye. I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
Steve votes aye. And Scott?
Aye.
And Scott votes aye. We unanimously recommend approval of the rezone. So thank you for those who participated and thank you, Mr. Justin, for being here tonight. And then Lyle, when do you suppose this might be on the council agenda?
This one where there's not extra detail to prepare, if we can have this ready for the council, I believe, the upcoming meeting on June the 4th.
Okay, if you'll just stay in touch with Lyle, Rust, and then I'm sure that they'll move that right along.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks very much. I'll bride and we come to our last business item, which is, and as Lyle noted, we are doing, looking at the final plat approval for the Orchard Ridge subdivision, phase 1B only. The other phases have been, approval for those has been withdrawn at this point. So we are only considering phase 1B. So with that, Lyle, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair, and it's probably semantics. I'd say that the applicants just simply requested a tabling of the two through four phases. And so they'll be back soon. They're not trying to back away from that completely, draw the application.
Right.
Items. On 1B, again, this is the property east of Highway 89. It's been under developed by Ovation Homes. The, you can see here on the map, have multiple phases. This piece of property where my cursor is, I think you can see it, is where the aqueduct is that runs up and down in this area. And the phase 1B completes the development below that aqueduct. So all the infrastructure, water pressures and everything are still in place to service that. Frankly, from staff, we thought it would have made sense to do as part of phase one. But there were other reasons why the developer wanted to break that up, do it a little bit later. So what essentially what we're looking at, I will look at the next plat here. I think there are eight total lots. Nine total lots within phase 1B, very much is consistent with the preliminary plat, annexation and development agreement that's been put in place for the property. That's got standard improvements along the public street, which is Orchard Ridge lanes. Not a great image that you can see here. And anyway, the engineering and other details have been reviewed and staff's ready to recommend approval of this. And again, in this case, the planning commission is the final decision body on this. So we'd be looking for a final determination from the commission. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, staff at this time.
Okay, thanks. Just a reminder to the commissioners, this is different from the other items that we've considered, whereas we're not making recommendations on this. This is not a legislative item. This is an administrative item and we're making the final decision on this, whether to approve the final plat. Final plats are generally just a formality. A lot of the hard work is done in the preliminary plat and the final plat. We're just checking to make sure that all of the requirements of the final plat have been met and that the staff is satisfied that all of the city requirements and those requirements are met and it's ready to move forward. So while, and just a question, I guess, again, to reiterate, staff feels that all of the requirements for the preliminary plat and for the city's development ordinances have been met with this.
Yes, for the space 1B, that is accurate.
Okay, commissioners, any questions of staff? All right, then with no questions, are we ready to have a motion on approving this final plat?
Yeah, this is a commissioner in the way, and I will make a motion for final plat approval of the Orchard Ridge subdivision, phase 1B, and then I believe tabling two, three and four, for Ovation Homes and Compass Development, approximately 1402 North, Highway 89.
All right, Kwan has made a motion to approve the final plat for phase 1B of Orchard Ridge subdivision. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Matt?
All right, Steve has seconded that motion. Is there any other discussion to that motion? All right, if not, let's go ahead and vote. Kwan?
Aye.
Kwan votes aye. Josh?
Aye.
Josh votes aye. Jared?
Aye.
Jared votes aye. I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
Steve votes aye. Scott? Scott votes aye. And Toby?
Aye.
Toby votes aye. So we have unanimous approval of the final plat. All right, that does it. We are finished with our matters of business. Now we just have some other details. First of all, we ought to do the call to the public. If there is anyone here still participating in our meeting from the public that wishes to address the commission. Lyle, have we got anybody out there?
Yeah, we do have one, a couple still attending, and one has raised her hand, Megan Fink, who's interested in speaking.
Okay, all right, let's go to Ms. Fink and go ahead and address the commission if you would like.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question about the general plan. How do we find out more information about that? Is it on the Caseville website? When is it coming up? How do we put some input into that?
Great question. I think Lyle is going to give us an update on where things are at on the general plan. So hang on for just a minute there and I think we're going to get that.
Thank you.
You bet. Lyle, anybody else?
If anybody is interested in speaking, please raise your hand now. I see no one doing so. If Mr. Chair, that's all the interested comments.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, let's go to the staff then for other matters, reports, correspondence and calendar. Lyle, since that question was asked, why don't you give us an update on the general plan and where things are at and what's happening?
I'd be happy to. So I'm going to turn my screen again and maybe show those who are in attendance what we're doing with that and how to how to get to it. Make sure.
Okay, so just from the Caseville City webpage, starting June 1st. And so we've put out in our newsletter that's coming up and we plan to probably tomorrow, but certainly the very first part of next week, start through social media advertising to the public and other means, requesting their participation in the general plan process. There will be multiple ways to get through it, through Facebook and other outreach that will do emails and stuff that we have on our list. But primarily, if you go to the city's website, once it's live, casevillecity.com, you'll be able to come down here and there will be, under the latest news and headlines, a spot where you can click in to learn more about the general plan. For tonight, it's a little bit hidden, but under community, general plan update, I'll show you a little bit of what's in the works with this. So Landmark Design is a consultant that we've been working with on this project. And they've put together some initial activities for this process. They'll be made available through this link. And this hopefully takes us to that first portion. Well, you know, so some of our website, we're still working through in the next couple of days. So I'm going to go through one other route here in just a minute. It essentially is this visual preference survey, but it's going to be in a slightly different format. That's part of the comments we're looking for, understanding what people, some of their preferences are on how things are built and developed. And. Give me while I pull up one more link before I share it. So anyway, through the same route through the city's website, you'll be able to get to this page, which is that initial outreach that we're looking for. Introduce people to the plan. We'll have a little introduction video that's been put together. And then there are kind of three activities that we're hoping to get the public to participate in to start with. I'll come to the map in a second, but first is a questionnaire, trying to get an understanding of some things that are important to residents and businesses within the city. That visual preference survey where if you were to click on it, you come through and you can rate different imagery on things that you like, you hate, you love, whatever. And we use that for some feedback. And then back on the main page, kind of one of the fun things is this project map where members of the public will be able to come in and leave comments regarding location. You know, something you like, you come into the map, drag it, maybe City Hall here. Leave a comment, contact information, something that you have issues with, ideas. You know, obviously being facetious, but this would be a great place for the world's tallest skyscraper. You know, let us know about that. And this will be something that the community, I think, will be able to see each other's comments and kind of have a feeling of everyone wants some of the vision and ideas that people are getting. So, you know, certainly as the commission, anyone else is participating in the meeting, spread the word out. Again, we'll start that advertising, but and we just as much comment and feedback and input as we can get in this process. You know, this is the first of several months and multiple activities that we hope to do to start generating, you know, better understanding and vision and guidance for the city. Commissioner Sunlaw is probably in particular really been pushing the charge to get a future land use map so you can see how the comments we get from that map will be relevant to that. People could click on an area and say, you know, I think this is a great place for apartments or this needs to be kept as farms. And those things will start to help develop some concepts and scenarios as where the final product will go. So please encourage anyone you know to utilize that. Let me know if you have any questions regarding it. But I think you'll see here in just the next few days, the push going out as to how to access those tools and participate.
So that goes live June 1st, right, Lyle?
That's correct.
How long do you anticipate we're going to leave that open and be doing those activities?
Yeah, so what we've talked about is essentially the month of June that will be open and allowed for input. So it's it's a fair amount of time to make sure we get as many people and as much comments as we can for the process.
Now, I know, you know, normally when you do a plan update like this, you also look at taking things out to the public in meetings and gatherings and so on and so forth. We are in very different times. Are there any plans to do any of that?
There are. So we're trying to, this was our initial outreach effort primarily because of the COVID-19 issue is we knew we had to do something remotely. And so we started with this and we'll see how things evolve. But the consultant has several ideas of large or small group settings where in person outreach to the community and opportunities to discuss and participate in activities will be made available. Open house, shreds, they talk about these living room sessions, I think they call them, where they may go to different parts of the community and have smaller group discussions and such. So any number of ideas, a little bit of it's still dynamic and in the works, partly based on what we can do. And hopefully, as things continue to normalize, there will be more options moving forward. So, yeah, again, this is just the beginning, initial steps, and there will certainly be more.
Great. Looks like we're finally underway and getting the public involved in our general plan update for the community. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, Lyle, what else do we need to talk about?
So our next meeting will be scheduled for June the 11th. I'm anticipating that that meeting will be in this format. We're noticing some ordinances, we're considering working on our standard drawings. And in order for me to even notice it, I'm going to notice where and how that's going to be for the public to know how to participate. It's looking more like we're going to be able to get back to actually meeting in person. And it may be possible to have done on the 11th, but not knowing the location and the details of that just yet, my recommendation is we still do at least one more of these meetings. And we will push as staff to try and get us back in person, possibly by the next meeting in June. I think council. Correct.
Right, okay.
So as we learn more about space options, unless something changes and we divert back to a red or orange status, it's probably heading in the other direction, if I'm guessing right.
So just in the meeting I was in today, I I I'm in two different meetings, one for economic development, one for state homelessness. And the one yesterday, they said the governor was going to go green as of June 1st. And then the one today with the lieutenant governor, they said June 15th. So I have no idea. Somewhere between June 1st and June 15th, we'll probably be green and be able to sit together. So I'm just keep a weather eye out for that.
Okay.
All right, that's probably our reports, unless there's direction or questions of the commission at this time that you'd like to give us.
Yeah. Yeah, anything, commissioners have anything that you'd like to bring up at this point? Everybody's ready to go to bed, right? We're about to that point. It's a long meeting tonight and appreciate you're all sticking in on this. Abby, we're, we appreciate your sticking in here too, even though you, we're not an active participant, but good to have you here and seeing how the commission works and what we did.
Thanks, good to be here.
All right, and if there's nothing else, Lyle, anything else in final?
Just look for motion to adjourn, I suppose.
For a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, without debate. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, well, I could ask if anyone's opposed, but I doubt it. So. All right, thanks very much all, and we will see you again in a couple of weeks.
Take care.
You later.
Thanks.
Thank you.